How do you reflect New York accent in text?
Cater section. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda. The Zoom app can be loaded onto smartphone, laptop, tablet, or other computer. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom, including typing in their name and address for the public record. The chair and/or vice chair will review the questions after the select board members have had their discussions and direct them to the appropriate participant for a response. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. Okay. Has Jack hasn't joined us?
He's here.
He's there? Okay, great.
You're good to go. And you're live on Facebook.
Okay, great. So the first agenda item for this public meeting is for any...
Quick point of order, Diane. Do we need to do a roll call open?
Need to open.
We... Oh, but we opened. We opened earlier.
No, we closed.
Oh, you closed the meeting after exec? Sorry.
Yeah, that... yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, my fault. I should have told you.
No, no, no. So in order to open the meeting, I would like a roll call in alphabetical order, please, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that. So the first order is for people that would like to make public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you do so, you can use the question and answer feature on Zoom. We'll give you 30 seconds to do so. If you want to speak to something that's on our agenda, I'll ask that you hold off till that item comes up. Okay. Seeing no questions, we will move on to our community update, which we have from our emergency management and staff folks who have been briefing us weekly or bi-weekly, whenever we have a meeting on the COVID situation, the state of emergency, and all that is related to that. So I'll turn it over to whomever is going to go first. Chief?
I guess we're all going to stare at each other, so I'll get started. Since the last time we briefed the board, the big changes have been to Phase One, or excuse me, Phase Three Part One. And it's been along the line of youth sports. And then obviously, for high school sports, the MIAA weighed in shortly thereafter. But youth sports were... We'll call it the regulations were tightened drastically on the 17th of August. So we've been working with, right now, the only youth sports going on in town, organized youth sports at the moment is Cohasset Youth Baseball. And we've been working with them on a daily basis, trying to get everybody spun up. And they are right now, it's been very interesting because they've been working, or the teams that they're competing now are coming from out of town. And when the out-of-town teams come in as guests, we expect them to play by our rules. Some of it's gone well. Sometimes they're like, "Well, that's not what they make us do in our town." And it's been very interesting from that standpoint that these are statewide guidance and they're not being followed quite as strictly as we might be following them. So, you know, kudos to everybody involved, from the baseball folks to everybody at the town level, to DPW, to emergency management, to everybody. Because we're, you know, we've so far so good. We've been able to get through this and we're getting ready to queue this up for the fall sports programs, which of course will include the youth soccer. As far as the MIAA weighing in on how they're going to handle high school sports, that came out last week also. And we're going to start working with the athletic director in regards to how exactly that's all going to play out and how they're going to follow the regulations. So that's the biggest thing from the state and the guidance standpoint. So I'll kick it over to Pam and Pam can give you an update on what's going on on the health front.
I actually have some good news for a change in the health front, and that's about triple E. The state did aerial spraying in the biggest hotspot areas, which was in Plymouth County and Bristol County. And it extended as far north up into Norwell. And it was really, really effective. This was on August 10th. And they've calculated that they knocked out probably 70% of the mosquito population. And then of that, 80% were the mammal biting type of mosquitoes that infect people. And since then, they've been, you know, going to their traps and looking at mosquitoes and they have not been detecting triple E. So normally, they were supposed to do a second round of spraying. But since the first one was so effective, plus we're now nearing the end of August, beginning of September, when the population's tendency decrease anyway, they're not going to do anymore. So there's just been, well, I'd say just because I wouldn't want to be one of those three people, but there have been three cases last year. By comparison, there were 12 cases and six deaths. So I think part of the reason why things are so low also is because we haven't had much rain. It's been drought conditions, but that's worked in the advantage of triple E. So usually, the triple E season is the month of August and then like first couple weeks into September. So so far, so good and things looking really good in that front. And then the other major thing is that we and everybody else in the state as well as pushing everybody to get their flu shots this year. And it's now mandatory for anybody from babies, six months old, all the way up to age 21, it's mandatory you have to get a flu shot. So for kids in school, you have until December 31st to get your flu shot this year. And for kids younger than age nine, you should get it from your pediatrician because the younger kids have to get two shots. And so you want your pediatrician to track it. Otherwise, everybody else can go to pharmacies in town. They can go to CVS, Walgreens, Stop &amp; Shop. The town of Cohasset will also be having a drive-through flu clinic. But I think normally about 80% of the population gets flu shots. So the state's anticipating there will be enough to go around. So really, like anybody and everybody should be able to get a flu shot. And we really urge you to do so because combined with COVID, you don't want to be getting the flu.
Pam, just for clarification, you said that it's mandatory for 21 and under if they're attending school, right? It's not... If you don't attend school, there is no mandatory?
Right, that's right. Thanks, Corey. Yeah, you're right. But you should get it anyway.
And along that line, just as Pam mentioned, the town has three flu clinics planned. Two will be drive-throughs. Their Glen's been, so emergency management's been working with Mary Goodwin to get those planned. There'll also be an in-person one that'll be by appointment only. The reason we haven't released the dates at the moment is we're still trying to figure out what our allotment of flu vaccine is going to be. So we don't want to plan something and then be held back by the fact that we don't have enough vaccine at that point. So hopefully, we'll have enough vaccine. Mary's put in additional orders, especially after the new guidance came out in regards to everybody getting a flu shot. So it's, you know, that's standby on that one. But it'd probably be toward the end of September and the beginning of October when we do our drive-throughs. And there'll be much more coming on that.
But you could go right now, if you wanted to, to those other pharmacies in town. So don't wait.
Sorry, Paul?
Yeah, so I want to reemphasize that that's incredibly important this year, more than any other year because the mix of an influenza seasonal infection with a COVID-19 infection mortality is remarkably raised. We saw this in Italy, we saw it in Germany, we saw it in Spain. We saw it also in Hong Kong, Taiwan, Japan. The combination of a seasonal flu infection with COVID-19 will increase standard mortality across the board close to 5%. So it also will potentially prevent someone who will have COVID from getting an infection from the kids that are going to spread it and as well as protecting everyone from the seasonal flu. So the federal government did push out about a month early the delivery date for the flu vaccines for that purpose. So I strongly urge that unless you have a true allergy, get it at CVS, get it at, you know, get it at Costco, wherever you can. Get it early and don't worry that you're getting it too early. That's all.
And just for the, just for the, for the record, just so that we're not advertising for one operation on top of another, CVS, Walgreens, and Stop &amp; Shop are all offering flu shots in Cohasset.
Yes, anywhere you can get it.
Okay, anybody else? Keith Quigley, are you speaking?
Yeah, no, I will though. I'm just going to give you a quick update on what's going on in the police department. You know, this is just the new normal. So we're operating basically at capacity. All these things that you hear about, whether it's a flu clinic or, you know, you know, getting the school, you know, helping the schools get up and running with Glenn Pratt, you know, all these things touch the police department. So we have personnel committed to those projects. I know that Glenn has been, you know, every day working hard with the school department and, you know, trying to get them squared away. And we also have some meetings coming up Thursday about, you know, the re-entry plan. And, you know, these are going to pose traffic challenges because of the different, you know, because of the hybrid model. So we're expecting, you know, traffic issues on Pond Street and as well as Sawyer Street in the gas project isn't going to help any of those things on Sawyer Street. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into these things. And there's a whole backend and everything requires a written plan and contingency plans and everything else. So those are the types of things we're working on. Now beyond that, we took delivery of a message board trailer. You may have seen it. We're just testing it out. It's up on South Main Street by the Historical Society. That trailer was purchased with COVID cares money. And Glenn and the manufacturer dropped that off at the station the other day. So we're just sort of, you know, dealing with the learning curve on it. It's pretty sophisticated unit. It's not like the ones we used to have. Well, one of the ones the DPW did have, we had, DPW had two. One has died completely. It's, you know, over a decade old. So this one replaces that again, it was bought with cares money. And we have another one on the way through a separate grant. So these things are going to be key in, you know, getting word out about the flu clinics, about different road closures and COVID information. I don't know if Glenn wants to add anything about those units.
Well, only that we need them, we use them all the time. And having the new generation is a tremendous asset. The two that we've had, the DPW has been using since the Little Harbor Sewer and Water Project back in 2007. So they've served their time. But the emergency management agency's main function in an emergency is to coordinate the needs and the functioning between different departments to accomplish the response to the emergency. And everything has been working tremendously for the last five months between departments. The cooperation is unbelievable. And we in fact are working on things collectively together every single day just because of the nature of how the emergency is unfolding. The last couple of weeks, we have worked almost exclusively with the school department. There, they have a lot of things going on, curriculum and the academic side like that. But their logistical and physical needs are unbelievable. And, you know, DPW facilities, emergency management, we've worked almost full-time the last two weeks just helping the schools get ready to go. We have, with the help of purchasing over the last couple of months, we have assembled all the PPE that's thought to be needed when they reopen. We have plans in place for sanitizing and keeping the buildings within the guidance that the state recommends. So that's our best, better focus and we think we're going to be on track with them. One of the, one of the other unsung heroes in the community is the Music Circus. We have leaned on them for all sorts of things. And they've been, they've been a great partner in helping us get the logistics done that we need. And we talked about a little bit, the flu clinics. For years, the emergency management has drilled and had a emergency dispensing site plan in place, which is required by FEMA. And now here we are, we're not drilling anymore. It's actual live, really use it. So this has been a tremendous test of the volunteers and us, our team, and everybody who's been focusing on emergency response over the years. So that's all I have for updates. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Just one of the things that's sort of funny with Glenn is, you know, about a decade ago, you know, we made a plan for the emergency dispensing site. And I sort of, you know, it was, you know, you sort of shrugged your shoulders, saying, "When will we, will we ever use this?" So I was in a full panic about a month ago, looking for, looking for the plan. I found it. It's, you know, thankfully, it's still relevant and everything is updated on it now. But you never know, that's why we do these things. And beyond that, you know, we've had to make a lot of changes at the police station. I know Town Hall has done the same thing. You know, people, you know, you sort of forget that, you know, the town is an employer. You know, we have a lot of employees, people that we're responsible for and have to make sure we take care of. So we've had to make changes to the physical plant. You know, we have to make sure they have the proper equipment to do the job. You know, we do fall under OSHA regulations now, which we never did until last year. So it's been, it's been great working with Glenn through all these issues as well as Chris and Miriam. You know, the human resources part of this is just, you know, it would have overwhelmed us if we didn't have people, you know, that specialize in this. And, you know, you can imagine with, you know, just the police department, we have 35 some odd employees. And there's, you know, childcare challenges and all that that come along with officers having young children in school and hybrid models and all this. So working through those problems alone, it's, you know, she and Chris have been invaluable.
Just to follow on what Chief Quigley mentioned about the gas main project on Sawyer Street, just so everybody's up to date on what's going on. That is a gas main replacement and they're doing the full length of Sawyer Street. Once they get the main in the ground, then they'll start connecting houses. On South Main Street, they did the same thing earlier this year with the gas main replacement, but they could not go into anybody's house because of COVID. So now they are back on South Main Street and they are attaching to individual homes. So that's why the one ways are up on South Main as well as Sawyer Street. It's all to try and expedite this gas work so we can get it done and get it over with. And obviously, we've come a long way with one, you know, 10 years ago, we had over 2,000 active gas leaks in the town of Cohasset. So getting rid of the old steel pipe and putting a new pipe is making a huge difference.
All right.
Just a quick question for Chief Quigley. I mean, with the, you know, the gas work on South Main and Sawyer Street in the school, what kind of hours are your officers working, you know, per week now? It just seems like you guys are being stretched everywhere.
Yeah, most of the officers are doing, you know, probably 16-hour days. You know, that's just the way it is. So and, you know, I'm really, I'm reaching out to individual offices and having, you know, discussions with them about, you know, it's time to take some time off. We're trying to get everybody a week off during the summer, at least a week, you know. They have to use their time. And we, you know, we want them fresh for the, we don't know what the fall holds. So again, it's, it's been a challenge, but, you know, we have enough people right now and our special offices have been a tremendous help. And, you know, it's, it's been all hands on deck, that's for sure. And that goes for this team too. I mean, we're on the phone seven days a week, most, most weeks.
Thank you. I mean, we, you know, we are always appreciative of the work that everyone in town that works for town does. But this, these are really extraordinary circumstances. And we tend to forget that, you know, not only is the town of Cohasset an employer, but, you know, we are all employees somewhere else and dealing with really unusual stresses, as is the community. So it's challenging and, you know, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there, including my co-select board members who, you know, have their own challenges.
It's been good. We've been able to remain flexible and, you know, help, help the employees out. It's just, it's important to do that. And again, you know, it's been a team effort.
Yep. Terrific, thank you. Any other questions? Because if not, I'm, go ahead, Chris.
I just want to quickly add that we're obviously working towards reopening Town Hall. And we're tentatively looking at opening, obviously, we are providing services the whole way through. And we're hoping to be able to do something after Labor Day. We'll have more information shortly. Waiting for some, some equipment to come in. We're adding some tempered glass shields in a variety of places. We have a new entry window, a new window up there in the treasure collector's office. And we're going to limit the number of people in the building at any given time. So that's on its way. So we are working towards that. And again, more information coming soon, but we're still providing services as we go. And if anyone has seen, we have a temporary ramp out front that allows access to the auditorium for early voting. And we'll have a more permanent-looking one for the two weeks that are coming up in October for the general election.
Great, thank you. I was, it was impressive that the, you know, people could vote on Sundays. So and pretty much during regular business hours this week through Friday at noon, I believe, for early voting. Great, thank you. So we, I didn't give enough time for some questions to come in during public comment period. So if somebody on the board would be willing to make a motion to reopen the public comment period, and then I'll kind of queue up the comments that we have.
I move that we reopen the public comment period.
Second.
Okay, we have to roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Did we lose Dr. Schubert?
He's come back, there he is.
Hi, Paul. Do you want to vote? Unmute.
Aye, Paul Schubert.
Thank you. So public comment, is it opportunity for people to express comments that aren't on the agenda? And because they're not on the agenda, the select board can't really address them. However, this is a unique item. So I'm going to kind of run through the comments that we've received and then ask Chris to address them because I think we can make the, those who have written to us feel better. So we received an email yesterday from Jeff and Michelle Millard of 555 Jerusalem Road relating to the Mariner article that was basically with information from March on the renovation and restoration of Wadley Park. Michelle is on, on the line, I guess, watching and asked if I would read her letter into the record. So I will do that. "We would like to address the project plans for Wadley Park. It is, it was of great interest to us as director butters to the town land at Wadley Park that there are plans in process to take the densely wooded land between Wadley Park Road and our land and have it turned into a public parking lot for Black Rock Beach. It is of great interest because the news article in the Cohasset Mariner and the Patriot Ledger on August 21st is the first we, as director butters, have heard of this project. No one from Public Works Department, Conservation Committee, or the Cohasset 250 Committee, who seems to have been the initiators of said plan back in February, has addressed the proposed park and parking changes with us. After reviewing board meeting minutes and available minutes, we have only been able to see mention of Wadley Park update on the selectment agenda 7/28/2020. No minutes yet available from this meeting. No original proposed plan that we can find. No mention in any conservation committee meeting agendas or available minutes either. We agree that parking at Black Rock Beach, or lack thereof, is an issue that needs to be addressed. We love the idea of Amerina's Memorial. We also would add that this corner of ignored town land is a hot mess of invasive species, an area that we have spent considerable time and funds in trying to mitigate from encroaching onto our land. We are not in agreement with the lack of public notice and process specifically with neighboring abutters to review any plans proposed for this land. We would appreciate notice of any discussion about this land and proposed plans for it." That's from Michelle and Jeff Millard. And we did receive that. And then we also received comments in the question and answer section of the Zoom platform from Fred and Dean Pudall, who also asked whether we received an email from them, which I have not. So I don't know, we can follow up on that, but I'm going to read their comments as well. "We are Fred Kylie and Dean Pudall, and we reside at 505 Jerusalem Road. We formally request that the following be entered into the public record this evening. We have owned the home at 505 Jerusalem Road for approximately 14 years. We were completely caught off guard when we recently learned about a proposal by the town of Cohasset to create expanded parking areas in the area of Wadley Park for the use of Black Rock Beach, which proposal apparently includes not only an increased number of parking spaces along the road abutting Wadley Park, but the creation of a completely new parking lot and public walkway at the rear of our home and directly abutting the home of our neighbors to the rear on Jerusalem Road. As director butters and contrary to the recent article relative to the proposed project published in the Cohasset Mariner in 821, we were never notified of the proposed project or scope and we have had no communication with anyone from the town with respect to this project. The article seems to imply that there has been no opposition or impediments outstanding with respect to the proposed project. But in fact, we are aware of no public process having been part of this project to date, which in turn might solicit such opposition or desire for input from residents. The recent article in the Cohasset Mariner also seemed to indicate that the proposed project would be approved soon. September is the target. It would seem inconsiderate and irresponsible that such a project with both safety concerns and major impacts to the director butters should possibly move forward to prove, toward approval without the voice of those most impacted. We firmly believe that any resident in the town of Cohasset would expect that same respect and process. Thank you for your consideration." And that is from Dean Pudall and Fred Kylie. So Chris, can I turn it over to you to allay their fears, please?
Yeah, so let me, let me stress that the article that appeared in the Mariner seems to have been recreated from conversations that were taken many months ago. And it's very much out of sequence of time. So the board obviously has had a very robust conversation and the town is actually exploring because the town, the public owns a large chunk of land right there, right between those two homes. And the town is most certainly exploring that. That said, there's been no applications filed with anybody. It's all being explored. And in fact, both property owners are on notice because there's some issues with encroachment, which we'd like to deal with them directly about. And I'm going to be resending both of them. I don't have the emails for the two gentlemen because I haven't seen that either, but I'll get them. But I, we have a copy of the plan was presented publicly. I sent to both of them. There's, again, it was a draft conversation piece. There's a lot more conversation to be had. Nothing's been filed with the Conservation Commission yet. And we have to go to them because of the proximity of the wetlands. There's a chunk of publicly owned land there. It's been publicly owned for a very, very, very long time. There's no plans to clear cut anything. There's no plans to clear, I mean, none of that was ever considered or given discussed. What's been discussed is solely reconfiguring that to make it safer and to also enhance the parking. So add parking and make safer. A corollary to the common, very different, but same concept, right? More safer parking. And the town does want to be to land there that, and again, there's been some encroachment issues, which I know that at least one owner has been put on notice about. So we'll continue to work with them collaboratively. And as, when a application is actually filed, the Conservation Commission will certainly want all the public input we can get. And as I said, we're going to be sending both of them and anyone else wants to see a copy of the draft conversation that happened February, I guess, or January. It may have been earlier than that when we met with the 250th Committee. So the town is exploring that site and looking at what can be done there safely. And again, any applications will have to be publicly noticed. Go to Conservation Commission, make sure that everyone's put on notice. And there's plenty of public comment before anything actually happens. So I hope that answers the concerns. And well, certainly, nothing was happening. So I'm, I mean, I'm glad it...
No September and probably not even...
I mean, the only thing that might happen in September would be an application to the Conservation Commission for jurisdiction. That's, you know, it really depends. I mean, there's a lot of other things that aren't everybody's plate right now. So likely is that anything would actually happen here. And again, there's very little actual construction to talk about. There's no paving or anything that I'm aware of. I think it's, the intent is to keep it in a much more open area, you know, with gravel and things of that sort. It's not going to be paved and all that. And the road itself is already paved. So if there's any work done there, it would be just to, I think, make it safer and, you know, and sketch out the parking boxes a little bit better. But again, if there's, when there's an application and that'll happen, there'll be plenty of public notice. And if there's any work done, it's probably, in a best-case scenario, probably not going to take place until 2021. That's my expectation. But again, it's also come back before, this board anyway. Your commission is a park of parks. So if any improvements that would actually be done to the site, we'd circle back to all of you anyway.
And we would like, we would have it as an agenda item for discussion. So before it ended up in the hearing process.
Yeah, but if I don't get it out tonight, I'm sending a copy. Brian Joyce, the public work director, pulled some materials Yeah. But if I don't get it out tonight, I'm, I'm sending a copy of Brian Joyce, the public works director, to pull some materials and I have that to send to the Millards. And I don't, again, I don't have the email address for the other gentleman. Five, but I'm happy to send it to them. If they just send an email over to town manager@cohassetma.org, I'm happy to send it to them too.
Okay, we, I requested that they send that email to, to us after this meeting. So, great. Thank you. Okay, let us move on. The next item on our agenda is a change of manager for the Red Lion Inn. We, at the request of the applicant, they have withdrawn that application. So we can move right from there to, we're like two minutes early to the FY 20 budget update, FY 21 update, and then we'll talk amongst ourselves a little bit about the budget message process. So I'm going to turn this over to Chris and to Dawn, who's with us.
Donna's, Donna's, Donna's spitting up here, there it goes.
How's, how's the baby?
Oh, she's doing great. Thank you. Growing like a weed.
And you're getting a lot of.
Crawling? Wasn't she just born?
No, growing like a weed.
Oh, I was going to say crawling.
Yeah, I'd be in real trouble if she's crawling already.
She prepared this budget now.
Thank you for asking. So, so we have a preliminary review of, or the first look at the close of FY 20. Don's done a lot of work. The board got the entire pack that there was a series of item cover memo that I, that I added. And then there's some spreadsheets and there's some what short couple of page summaries and then this day line items, items for both sewer and water as well as the general fund. And so, yeah, this is a first look at that. The audit still has to take place. There's still some, some reclasses. I believe that Don's working with the COVID money. But that said, FY 20 is closing out in a pretty good place, which we had hoped for, we had expected for. And despite the rough end of the year, you know, we were closing out in a good place, which puts us in a good position starting FY 21. And again, one of the key points I'll just highlight with FY 20 is that we collect like 99 plus percent of the property tax revenue, which is great. And that's historically where we are, right around there. So and with the, the prior year number that always, there's always some people who don't pay for whatever reason that rolls from one year to the next. We were at a hundred plus percent. So, so we were fine. We actually had a good revenue year. The members on motor vehicle excise was good. And even the meals tax revenue was actually pretty good. It's better than normal. And that's even with, without really a lot of fourth quarter money. That was all pushed back by the state because of the delays in collection. So with that kind of preview, let me turn this over to Dawn. She'll walk us through.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. What I usually do, I go through the general fund and then through the enterprise funds next. So take a look at the general fund, our revenues. We had a total revenue surplus of about $155,000. Slightly under last year's surplus of 1.1, but due to the economy and COVID and, and that's actually much better than I would have expected for June 30th close. And again, as Chris mentioned, there, I still have some year adjustments, reconciliations to do. So there may be some minor changes, but it wouldn't be anything material. Couple of things to note from the surpluses. Motor vehicle excise, we had about $200,000 of a surplus. Chris mentioned meals and room tax. Now there's almost 69,000. And the state actually extended the due date for the fourth quarter 2020 meals tax payments to, I believe, September or August. So there is some money potentially from, you know, Q4 of 2020 that we'll be receiving this coming September. So with that being said, I think a $69,000 surplus is great in that account. We, we reduce some of our assumptions for FY 20, just not knowing how things will be, the restaurants and openings of eateries and things like that. So having that type of surplus going into the next year, it's great news. Couple of things to note in under licenses and permits. All facility stickers, but a $98,000 surplus. That's about pretty much in line with what I would have expected based on approving an increase in the sticker price back in the spring. I think the initial calculation may have been somewhere around the low 90s. So with probably an uptick in sticker sales for people trying to get out of house during this time, 98,000 makes sense and is a great surplus as well. And another one that was a little more surprising too, but great news was building permit. But $104,000 surplus compared to our budget. And so, yeah, you'll see as Chris is sharing my, his screen, license and permits about 204 in total. I just explained about 200. So all the other ones, there were some, you know, small deficits offset by other surpluses, but overall looking great in the license and permits as well. And just another thing to note, we, we had a couple of months that were a little off with our investment income, but we still came out with about $87,000 surplus. Which again, is great. We, we try to keep that number low and not adjust year to year based on prior year actuals, just to be conservative. And, you know, we just really don't know from year to year. So we've kind of built that as a conservative budget. So we expect a surplus, but again, last year was slightly higher than that and continues to be good news. Before I go over expenses, are there any, any questions from the revenue discussion so far? Sorry, Diane.
Nope, go ahead, Paul.
So what are the miscellaneous revenues, 4840 line item? Because it looks like there's a big one. Is that CARES money?
No. So miscellaneous revenue, one of the big factors in that this year was there was a settlement of $40,000 that the town received from, I believe it was related to conservation. There were some fees out there that, that was finally settled on and that was about 40,000, I think even. You'll also notice when you look into detail, there's line items for Medicaid and then Medicaid for Health Department. In the last couple of years, I realized that some of these receipts from the state were getting posted to a wrong account. So you see about 30, $35,000 there that has been kind of reported and mixed in in other accounts of prior years. So that's why it looks a little bit higher. We've also been doing a great job. Michelle in procurement has been surplusing our surplus equipment. And I believe that was about $18,000 this year, which is, you know, just extra money, which is, which is really good. And I believe that's it. And then really there's some other miscellaneous revenue there and a lot of that could be workers comp reimbursement, various offsets during the year. Things like that. I could, if you needed it, I could try to go into more detail at another time, but.
Just looking to see because it looked big. So it's mainly one-time events.
Exactly, yep.
Any other questions on the revenues? Great, thank you. Continue.
All right. And then expenditures, a great year-end surplus of about 1.4 million. I did make a note when I was sending the information to Chris, if you're looking at this local receipts report and comparing it to the general fund detail report, you're going to see a difference in the actual expenses by about 242,000. Those are all COVID slash FEMA related expenses that I backed out for the purposes of the local receipts report. But because I'm still working on the year-end close and summarizing which grant these are going to be reclassed to, they're, they're not being reduced from that general ledger report. But you want to make that note. It will still, that's an accurate surplus on the local receipt. But just want to qualify that. The largest surplus out of this section, health benefits. You see employee benefits is at 533. Of that, 518,000 relates to health insurance surplus, which we budgeted a, I believe we leveled budgeted for FY 21. We could talk a little bit more, but that won't come into our 21 discussion, but we, we level funded that. So having a surplus go into that next year started, started us off good. And then we had a couple of minor adjustments, which we'll talk about shortly. And then just a couple of other items. We know that we had a surplus of about 25,000 in snow and ice. Warm winter. Normally that's about a $100,000 deficit. So that's about $125,000 swing from year to year, which is again, great news. The schools turned back about 85,000. And that's after them taking advantage of some prepayment for special education expenses. And then also covering some funds at year end with the, with the turnover of school, school business managers. I just wanted to make sure that they were covered. So we may free up a little bit more cash from, from their encumbrances next year, but 85,000 was a great turn back for the schools. And one of the larger ones within the other departments was the fire department turning back about 159,000 or having a surplus. The real reason for that budgeting, we factored in, we've received a safer grant, as you all know, that in the first two years, it pays for about 75% of the cost of two firefighters. So we've been trying to build up that budget so that when year four comes and we have to take on the whole burden, by year four, we'll have that fully budgeted within the fire department. So we, I ended up reclassing, I think it was about $100,000 of actual grant expenses out of the general fund to that grant. So that, and then again, the timing of some of the staffing needs in Chief Sylvia's department. You know, if they don't end up getting filled out halfway through the year, that's a half year's worth of savings. So between, between the safer grant and some of that timing, it turned into about $159,000. And, you know, between these two, the revenue surplus and this expenditure surplus, when we go into doing our free cash calculation and certification with the state, we should be right in line with our, with our our financial goals for free cash, three to four percent of our operating budget, which is again, great. Keeping up with our financial policies is always, always a good thing. Before I move on to sewer, any, any questions on the expense side?
Nope. Good work.
Moving right along, we'll jump into sewer department. Water and sewer have kind of a little quicker overviews, but so sewer, the revenue surplus was very tight this year. We only had a surplus of about $13,000. We, you know, I was comfortable with the budget for 2020. We, it was definitely a little tighter than I probably would have liked. I think we did a better job being a little more conservative than FY 21. So hopefully we won't be as tight as this going forward. On the expenditure side, about $64,000 surplus. And again, this is a really tight year. So I think we're okay for FY 21. But I definitely recommend that we try to go with the third party, kind of like what the water department did. Put in, and try to work with the rate study to, to assure we're, we're looking long-term, have a third party kind of come in and look at how our rates, rates are structured, what our operating needs are and, and more importantly, capital needs as well, so that we factor all of this in going forward and continue to be conservative as we like to be in all our appropriate funds. I will note that $64,000 surplus will, will grow by about 35,000. Due to shipping issues with the second side of the membranes at the sewer department, we had to divert flow to Hull for the second time, which resulted in a cost of about 35,000. I reached out to the state to have them opine whether or not that would be an appropriate use of the CARES funding. And they agreed with that. So because it was, it was due to shipping delays and manufacturing delays related to COVID, we'll be reclassing that until the CARES grant, which will free up some additional funding out of the sewer department. Any questions on sewer?
Great. Nope.
All right. Water. Another great year. Water's been doing a great job of the conservative budgeting, both on the revenue and expense sides. 184,000 dollar surplus in revenues. And big part of that, again, the conservative side of this is waterways added to taxes. A couple of years ago, I recommended that they no longer continue to budget for this because really all this is, is, is a carryover from prior year water bills that have not been paid that gets added to tax. So really, it's already been budgeted in the prior year. So it's essentially retain earnings in the next year when it comes in. So between that and they've had some good budget to actual results from their system development charges, their new hookups. 184,000 is a great surplus. Then going down on the expense side, again, they've done a great job being conservative. $221,000 surplus, slightly lower than I think the couple of surplus in the last few years, but I know they've had a few water main breaks and affect, I believe, a few extra charges this year that may not have occurred in prior years. But great surplus going into year end and doing our closeouts for retained earnings of both funds.
You know, Chris, I, I think I would love to put on a future agenda. Just kind of putting these, especially the water, the water budget in a, in a different context for us as we look at. I know there was a rate study and, you know, that they were recommending that there be, you know, increased water charges. And so, you know, when, when you look at this operating budget and there's surpluses, you think, oh, why would they want to increase, you know, the, the fees and bring in more money? And obviously it's because of some capital need. So I, I would love to see us have a more holistic conversation before it's January and we're like putting numbers in for FY 22 or going into town meeting with some kind of a, you know, a request. So I'd like to, you know, just put that on our list of kind of a deep dive, special conversation to have with the commissioners in that area. And then I, I see, I see both two selectmen have their hands up. So I'll get to them after Chris answers.
So I, I think that's an excellent point, Diane, particularly since there was a water rate study proposal or increase that was heading for a special annual town meeting, which we deferred. There are some, there are some, some studies going on about some major improvements that may have to be made to the plant. I do think it's important to have that context as people think about that. So we'll try to do something, I think, probably in the fall when everyone has time, we can breathe and, and then enough time in advance of considering this probably in spring.
Great. Okay, Jack?
Yeah, this actually was for sewer. I was frantically waving my hand and hitting the raise button. Anyway, on the sewer, there was a discussion about, I think Don was recommending there'd be a rate study for the sewer rates. And has that been discussed with, by, by the town with the sewer board or?
I have, I have brought this up to the sewer board a couple of times. It is in preliminary discussions. We haven't set anything in stone. I don't know if coming from me is necessarily going to make that happen. I may need a little more support, but we definitely have discussions about that. And I, I just think, you know, having a third party come in and do it like water. Not that it takes a burden off of me. I mean, I could definitely help, but I think having that third party, they had, they come from outside point of view. Where it's not necessarily, you know, one of the employees versus commissioners kind of trying to come up with this. And we have a third party that focuses on stuff like this, where they can compare rates and structures and how other communities and systems may do it. I, I just think it's a good practice. Maybe not every time, maybe not every five years, but we should probably get in the habit of just doing that and then refreshing it every number of years. However, that's determined.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up is I have been following sewer pretty closely and some of the other issues I think we're going to discuss later. And my understanding is that they're aware of that and they have already been, you know, planning to, to do some kind of, you know, rate study because my understanding is they are pretty much of an independent commission is, they are independent, correct? It's their decision.
Well, they make the recommendation, Jack, the town meeting has to approve.
Right.
Yeah, so they'd make the recommendation.
Yeah, I just wanted to think that, you know, I think everybody in town should know that I think that they've been working actively on figuring this out. Because you're working very hard. They do a good job.
Yeah, and certainly as we have other conversations about sewer and potential expansion that, you know, the, it's, it's all going to come down to the dollars and cents in my mind. So Yeah, and certainly as we have other conversations about sewer and potential expansion that, you know, the the it's it's all going to come down to the dollars and cents in my mind. So um, and obviously needing some other priorities like the environment. Um, Corey?
Yeah, yeah, two things. Um, one, I I want to echo what what Diane said. I mean, the line for, you know, debt service uh doesn't really tell the story here. Um, so I think I think kind of giving a overall, you know, uh, you know, situation, um, you know, brief about water would be uh would be fantastic. The other thing which I noticed on the report is we're still using the language capital recovery charge. Um, I believe last year the water department uh now he calls that, I believe, a service charge. No, because a capital recovery charge really wasn't an accurate description of that charge. So I'm just thinking we should probably reflect that change of verbiage in the budget as well.
I totally agree with you. Uh, that change has been discussed as part of this new rate study. So I mean, I guess it's semantics, but we could update them right now.
Well, water has changed their language. I mean, the bills say service charge now. So you know, whatever, I mean, you know, what's coming on the bills, yes.
It's news to me.
That, okay, well, news delivered. So yeah, please, please update that 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 way we have uh, we use the the, you know, universal verbature.
Sure. Okay.
Other, any other questions or Paul?
So you're probably going to see that the overall revenues will be higher for water and sewer because everyone's staying at home. Uh, or at least for the next few months, or at least the last few months. Um, the water department has asked for, you know, voluntary uh restriction for lawn uh watering, outdoor watering because of the uh the drought. So so that may affect their revenues a little bit, but I think the revenues will be up on both sides for the next few months because of kind of the people sticking it at home.
I'll tell you, the 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 first quarter commitment for water and sewer was up significantly. I believe the dollar increase was about 205, 210,000 from last year's Q1. So I definitely, I agree with you, Paul.
Chris, did I see you wave your hand or no?
Now, Don said exactly what I was going to say, so we're good.
All right, Don, you want to keep going?
Yeah, so I mean, that really wraps up uh the overview of FY20. Uh, over the next few weeks uh to a month, I'll be finishing up closeout reconciliations. I have most of the work done. You know, you get kind of sidetracked with the day to day stuff, so um hoping to have final year end stuff within the next month. Uh, again, it's not going to be a material change, if any, from uh what you have in front of you. And then we'll go through the the free cash and retain earning certification. Uh, my goal will be to have that information in the DOR by September. Um, I believe that was the same timeline as last year. So we should be in line with um how we were last year. Timing of retained earnings and things like that. And I know there's still a discussion about uh all kind of meetings, so there's not not really a rush to get it done. I believe last time we had it certified by the end of September with the submission early September. So we're still in line with that. And that's really, that's really what I have for for June 30th. You know, one thing which I can report better once I close out the year is just where we are with COVID expenses and COVID slash FEMA related stuff. Through June, at least everything I've identified to date, which again, could change a little bit as I go through a little bit more um detailed review of some of our funds. We've spent about $242,000 through June on various PPE, cleaning of buildings and sanitizer signage throughout town. Town uh, town meeting, uh, did a great job getting our town meeting done. So I can, I can provide a subsequent meeting, a better update of, you know, what we've been doing with the funding, where we're at. Uh, I've been working with Glenn Pratt, too. So part of that 242 we've spent so far, a good portion of that will be submitted to FEMA to get funds from them. So I can give definitely a better update another month or so. But to date, through June, we spent about 242. Plus or minus, like I said, 35,000 is not included in that number for the sewer flow diversion. So once I have this year buttoned up, I can give you a solid recap. And then uh at that point, also a year to date recap of where we've been through FY21. But we've definitely been making a a great effort to do what we need to do to keep everybody safe, buildings clean, get the buildings in a place to reopen, hopefully at one point soon. And so I think everybody's been doing a great job with that.
Great, Paul. Sorry, Corey.
But echo, I just, I was wondering if, uh, I know that the water department had some discussions about um changing uh the sources of water and and that, you know, if we get it from pumping station versus reservoir, there is a difference in cost. Have you talked with them about uh some of their changes and whether or not that's going to affect projected costs?
I have none, I have nothing included in any of those discussions yet.
Okay, yeah, I know.
I anticipate that I will be
Okay.
Going, you know, into the budget cycle and and if if those changes are going to have to be made made now, or or if they're going to be made closer to next year. It sounds like from from what you're saying, it's probably a more a near term type thing than
I believe it was on their agenda. Yeah, they haven't published their minutes yet, so I'm not quite sure if they made a a motion or a vote yet on that. I haven't, I haven't circled back to them, but I know it was was on an agenda for them to vote about um changing, you know, because of PFAS results. But I'm not sure where they ended up on that.
Okay.
So I I hang on, Gary, I'll get to you. Um, just, Chris, I'm I'm writing things down, but I I do think it would be really good to have a a focused discussion on CARES Act money and and expenditures and what that looks like and where that trends and what we'll get back and that kind of like. Carrie?
Yeah, that was kind of the question I had. Thank you, Don. This is really helpful. My question was if you see any surprises coming up in the next several months, if things continue the way they do, which I think we all agree is going to be for the foreseeable future, do you feel like you see things like PPE going up in terms of the amounts we're going to need? Do you see any other unexpected expenses? And how does that relate to possible CARES money is also what I was curious about.
Well, changes, that I I can't really foresee. I know we have a couple hundred thousand or a hundred or so thousand of dollars of PPE on hand for the schools and other departments. And we just really have to monitor where we're at going forward, how the supply chain looks. Michelle Leary and Glenn Pratt work on that constantly, just seeing what's out there for PPE and needs. Um, we have a great supply right now. So this is just kind of fluid situation, just trying to understand the needs as times change and and what we may need to buy in the future. But for now, we're we're definitely stocked up. I know police and fire have a great uh cash of PPE. So we're in good shape there. And, you know, everything else, I think we've been doing a great job with the with the buildings. I know there's some more stuff probably with the school that, you know, between their funding, they've also gotten a couple hundred thousand of other funding for school reopening in addition to the money that we've been spending down so far. So there's definitely a lot of conversations we've had and trying to have to make sure that we're we're covering all town property and in the buildings at the town, uh employees and public, you know, will frequent. And and again, when we do an update on COVID and CARES money, like I said, 242 is what what we've spent. Part of that will be reimbursed by FEMA. So that will actually free up additional money out of the CARES fund. So, you know, we're just trying to, I've been trying to communicate as much as I can with departments about looking in the future, what we need now. Uh, again, I think it really comes out of planning to ensure that all departments and buildings are adequately assessed and and we know what the needs are. In right now, the CARES money is only good until December 30th. So I'm going under the assumption that there's going to be no changes. I I don't know what's going to happen in the next few months, but for now, all I can go off of is what I know. And I know that this money dries up or if we don't spend it, we have to, we have to send it back to the state if we don't incur expenses by December 30th. So there's a lot of, you know, fluid stuff going on that we're we're always in communication and working on. Um, I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on FY21 current budget year? Okay, um, Dawn, I I'll, I I'll take the floor from you unless you have something else to add.
Go right ahead.
Right about this time each year, we start um discussing FY22 budgeting. Um, and which I think will be probably a little more challenging than, um, because there's probably a lot we're not going to know to Carrie's earlier point. Um, as things develop over the next five, six months, um, let's hope we have some sunshine and clearer brighter pictures ahead um in in next winter. But um, what we typically do is have a joint meeting or at least a discussion or a presentation from the advisory board. Um, and I'll reach out to their chair um and review in the middle of September, a um, a, an annual budget message from the select board that we kind of outline the parameters. You know, we say things like, we don't want to raise taxes, you know, we want to stay within the levy, we anticipate these being funding priorities. This particular year going to July 1, 2021, which is the first day of FY22, we will have negotiated theoretically um all of the union contracts across town. So that budget message is going to be very important this year. So um, you know, what we'll do is have a have a discussion just in general about where we are, where we think we might go with advisory. And then um the chair will usually draft a budget message. It's, you know, it's pretty pro former, but again, we're going to have things to 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 talk about within that structure of the budget document and and a charge to give to Chris as he goes forward and builds builds FY22 budget. So um, stay tuned. That's going to be a lot of work um over the next, say, six to eight weeks so that he's in a position to you know, literally start the budgeting process for 22 um in January. And again, with all these asterisks, because we, there's a lot of things we're not going to know about. So any questions on that? Chris, you good?
Yeah, I I uh, we're going to talk, Don and I are going to reach out to advisory to see if we can't do an update meeting with them in the next couple of weeks and give them the same presentation we just gave to all of you. Uh, and then I'll tee them up to to start a conversation. Obviously, everything's, I mean, I was talking to Senator O'Connor um this morning, and um he doesn't expect a state budget November at this point. Yeah, yeah, so um, and and so he expects them to continue, I guess, their month to month. The only good news from that is that it means that our state, it'll stay the same for sure. But he said there's, he said there's no promises after that. So it really does be, uh, because it really depends on what the feds are going to do here, right? This is not a Massachusetts problem, it's a national issue. And the federal government has yet to to take the next step to recognize.
So it it, yeah, in our, in the board's past conversations, we've always set kind of September 30th as our, as our deadline for the budget message. I mean, do you think that's unrealistic? And we should probably move that up a month just so we have a better sense of where revenues might trend?
Yeah, I I I don't think it would be, I mean, I I think starting the conversation, I think some of these preliminary conversations should be taking place now September, but you may, you know, you know, and I think some parameters that are important to set some direction, um, even now, um, that said, uh, it may be, you know, you that that everyone needs to be flexible and maybe changes and you may come back and say, wait a second, you know? But I think, you know, we built this year's budget to give us time, right? Uh, and and to stay stable and so far, so good. And I I I think the longer we go into this year in a good way, the more stability we have for the next year, uh, potentially, just based on, you know, our our financial situation. Circle back, I think we're talking in September and and maybe adopting uh something at least, at least
Framework?
Yeah, framework, that that'll give us something to work within. And um, and then, uh, you know, if there has to be additions or changes, you can pick those up in October and November.
Well, well, our number one goal was, you know, kind of monitoring finances in in particular in this unusual time. So we'll just continue to stay in touch with Don and and really with an eye on what what's ahead of us um as best as we can. So, great. Don, thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Right along, um. Next up, we have board and committee appointments. Um, you received sort of a list. I I just want to review what I anticipate we're ready to do um tonight in terms of making appointments to committees. And if any uh member has any issues or would like to to postpone anything for whatever reason, let's talk about it. But I I think we're prepared to make appointments to the alternative energy committee. Um, we're going to be getting an update from Tanya Bodell soon, and there's probably members of her committee tuning in. Um, the cable advisory committee, the community preservation committee with conservation commission. I spoke to the chair and there are two. Uh, Eric Eisenhower has been a full member and he's up for reappointment. Kathleen Barrigan was an um, an associate member and she is um, put an application in for a full membership position. There are three other applicants for two associate member positions, and I think that we should put that off for a subsequent meeting. Um, and we can talk about how best to interview um those three candidates for those two slots. When we discuss under goals and objectives, the master plan implementation working committee, um, there's a, there's a charge that's been developed for an economic development task force, and we'll discuss the citizen position and um an applicant that we have um in the wings. Two fence viewers for reappointment. The harbor committee has um, has a um representative from the recreation commission and and a one rep from the fishermen. We still need to fill a fisherman, um, a commercial fisherman um spot on the harbor committee so that, um, so we would just be doing the rec and one of the, one of the fishermen positions for harbor. Um, and then a full member for the master plan implementation committee um applicant in. The town hall building committee is a slate that was pretty much curated last year to manage a very specific project. So I would propose that we would renew that entire slate. And then zoning board of appeals, um, we have a reappointment, Woody Chitik, who's a long serving on that committee. And we have two other applicants, but both of them have expressed interest in other committees. Given this is a hearing board, um, I think the experience is probably um important enough to make the the appointment tonight um of Woody and and reach out to the other two candidates and see where they might serve on other committees that they've expressed interest in. So does that make sense with everybody, to everybody? Corey?
Yeah, just, I mean, and my apologies if you're going to bring this up, but I do want to make it clear to everybody. One, thank you for all those who applied. But two, just because we do this doesn't mean that we don't still need new people. Um, there are going to be, there's other open positions, as you just heard, some of that Diane has spoken about, open seats. And, uh, you know, even if we don't have something necessarily on the board you're looking for, we need you anyway. Um, so so please continue to send in those applications. And thanks again to everyone who is who has stepped up to volunteer.
Great. Um, so if every, does, does people have this in front of you? And would anybody like to go committee to committee based on the ones I just mentioned and um? And
Do you want, do you want me to show the spreadsheet, Diane, or not?
Yeah, if you could.
Do you want to start with alternative energy, Diane?
Yep, yep, that would be great.
I make a motion, we
And Paul, the, um, Chris, can you zoom out just so that um we can, you can see the appointment dates?
Number of years, yeah.
Yeah, the term.
Because those term dates are are important. And in in this case, there are unexpired terms. I wouldn't worry about, um, I mean, maybe Michael Schmidt, since he is a reappointment, we just give him a another full seat. And then the others are just subs, you know, they're coming in midway through somebody else's term. So you know, it doesn't matter. We can, hopefully they'll still be interested next time.
So I make a motion, we uh appoint to the alternative energy sources committee, two full members for three years. Michael Schmidt. And I guess it doesn't really matter, does it?
Doesn't really matter.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the following people for the alternative energy source committee. Adam Aman, Deborah Cook, Michael Schmidt, and Tyler Tebow. Two for three years, June 30 to 23. One full member for an unexpired term through June 30, 2022. One full member for unexpired term through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Do you want to clarify the terms for each of those people?
Yeah.
Just randomly assign them. Just randomly assign them.
The two full members will be Michael Schmidt and Tyler Tebow, and the one full member unexpired, 63022, will be Adam Aman. The one full member unexpired term, 63021, will be Deborah Cook.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Jack, did you have something to say? Here, sorry. Jack, you're on mute, there you go.
All right. I would point out that if we're going to have a full term, Debbie Cook has a long history of service and conservation, so I would suggest that on that Debbie really should be one of the full terms.
I know Tanya is also waiting, kind of in the waiting room for her report. Is it worth asking her her opinion on this, or do we think?
Sure, can can you bring her in? Hi, Tanya, we see you, but you're on mute.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. So we're, it's just, it's just sort of an administrative issue in that we have two positions that are full three years, one for one year, one for two years, just to parcel them out if there's a specific rationale for that, you know, would welcome your input.
Sure, so I think.
I'm looking to amend the motion as well, according.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with Jack that Debbie Cook has been involved extensively, especially with the community aggregation program, so I think it'd be great to give her the three year term. I'm going in just sort of in order of seniority of and effort that's started over the last year or two. And so I would say Debbie Cook for the three year, Michael Schmidt reappointed for the three years. And then Tyler Tabo has been very active on the microgrid subcommittee, and Adam is relatively recent, he's been involved since May, but has already really cut his chops on some important things and been very valuable. But given the seniority of involvement, I would say put him on one year, and then hopefully he'll be excited enough to.
For reappointment.
For reappointment for three years.
So, Chair, Madam Chair, I will withdraw the motion, I will remote remake a motion for.
Remote.
Appointing the Alternative Energy Sources Committee, two full members, Deborah Cook and Michael Schmidt. All right?
Terms through June 30th to 2023.
Through three years, June 30, 2023. The one full member unexpired term, 63022, to.
Tyler.
Tyler Tebow, and the one full member for unexpired term through 630, 2021, Adam Aman.
Terrific, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, beginning with Corey? Sorry, Jack?
Jack Creighton, Jack Creighton votes aye on the remote. Oh, excuse me.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, that's done. The rest, I think, are going to be easy, although Cable Advisory Committee's up next. Corey, if you would walk us through this and.
Sure, sure, as a matter of process, I would just request that we bifurcate this and we approve David and Laura. I had a great conversation with Laura Kennedy about her involvement, and she's currently very active with a few other committees in town, namely CMI and the CSCR. So she's kind of, she's also friends with many of the other board committee members, so really excited to have her, so strongly recommend her. David Bigley as well has been just a wonderful person to work with and love to have him again. I will recuse myself from for voting for myself, you know, just for the the appearance of a conflict of interest. This is a volunteer committee where there is no, there's no financial gain for me, this is purely a something that I am very passionate about. I'm passionate about getting this TV station to be a part of our vibrant community, engaging the community, and I would be humbled to be able to continue my work on that committee. We've got some really great things in the works, and I would appreciate the opportunity to do this for another year.
Thank you. Could could I ask for a motion for David Bigley and Laura Kennedy, and then we'll discuss Corey separately?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we reappoint David Bigley and appoint Laura Kennedy for one-year terms to the Cable Advisory Committee.
Is there a second? Lots of seconds, okay. And we'll vote in alpha order, Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey?
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane, I, Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Thank you. And Corey, I mean, this is, I know you, I believe you spoke with council, so this is an extraordinary appointment, but but Corey's been there in the weeds. It's, you know, it's a volunteer committee appointed by us, so there's, there's, you know, while there's, he'll have to recuse himself from some of the decision making, I think his leadership has been pretty outstanding there, and and I'd love to see him carry on until we can populate that committee and he can feel like they're they're flying on their own. So unless anybody has any other comments about that, and Corey, if you just, you know, want to confirm, obviously, that you spoke with council about.
That's correct, I've I had a conversation with actually the Massachusetts State Ethics Committee and with Town Council, and after, if I am appointed for this, I'll be filing a a conflict of potential, what's the form? Somebody help me here.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest form with, which will be publicly accessible with the clerk.
Great. Anybody have questions for Corey? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion, we appoint Corey Evans to the Cable Advisory Committee for a one-year term.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, Corey's recusing himself, so we'll start with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Great, congratulations. Next up is the Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to see if Russ was thinking about showing up, but we have three appoint, three reappointment requests, Kerry O'Donnell, Russ Bonetti, and Tom Riordan. I will tell you, because this has been sort of a challenge for me, these are three-year appointments, and the rest of the committee is populated with representatives from other committees, so this is, these are the citizen-at-large seats, and it, we had a, we kind of had a hiccup in the committee a number of years ago, quite some time ago, actually, and we ended up reappointing people to three-year terms all in the same year. So I would prefer to have, you know, be able to appoint somebody for three years, somebody for two years, somebody for one year to reset that. I did speak with Town Council, and because of the way this is structured in Mass General Law and our own bylaws, we cannot do that without a bylaw change. So it's, to me, it's not a priority matter, but it is probably something in terms of just having more frequent openings and opportunities for people to apply for a position. It's probably something we should think about from a governance standpoint going forward. Corey?
Is one way around that to only appoint one person, and then the other people continue in their positions, or would that be seen as just a?
Because their their terms technically expired on June 30th. I mean, you know, until the reappointments, you know, you can carry on. So so it is a slate of three people, citizen-at-large seats on CPC, and they're for three years. If anybody has a question or would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. If everyone's okay with that, sorry, I jumped in. Okay, I make a motion to to appoint Kerry O'Donnell, Russell Bonetti, and Thomas Riordan for three-year appointments to the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you. Next up is the Conservation Commission. As I, as I mentioned, I think Jay's here, I don't know. Jay, I see you, raise your hand if you want to speak. Okay, Jay, I think you're, we can unmute you, and. Jay?
Hey, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, thanks for joining us. Did you hear my sort of tee up of this, of these appointments?
Yes, I fully support that approach. I think Eric Eisenhower will be a wonderful addition to keep on. He has a great amount of experience as a master gardener, and Kathleen Barrigan has been an associate for one year now, and typical protocol, people serve as a one-year associate, get their feet wet with the commission, learn the rules and regulations, and then hopefully are appointed to a full-time commission appointment, so I strongly support those two reappointments.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions in the select board? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
I I move that we appoint Eric Eisenhower and Kathleen Barrigan to full member positions for three-year terms on the Conservation Commission.
Jack, how about a second?
I'll second, boy, Kerry, you jumped on top of me, I said so moved, and you said the whole thing.
I thought we had to say the whole thing, Jack.
You guys got to coordinate your signals better. Okay, we'll take a vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, I guess, aye.
Corey?
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Okay. If we could just pause here for two seconds, so, we have a wonderful problem in that we have three members, and I'm hoping that this will happen for some other committees going forward. We have three members for two, two positions, the two associate positions, and I would just like to ask the board, you know, we could have, we could have them come in one at a time and be interviewed at one meeting, and then, you know, we usually do ask the chair of a committee that we're appointing to, to, you know, just kind of, what kind of skill sets might they need, interview these individuals separately, and then at a subsequent meeting, make an appointment, or, you know, I'm open for suggestions. It's tough when you bring everybody into the same meeting at the same time, it 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 does make them uncomfortable, and we want to be as open and inclusive as possible. Jack?
Yeah, I think that we should be very careful. It's tough to put your name out there, and knowing that one of you is not going to make it, I would suggest that we we arrange with Corey, with Cable, to do a Zoom interview with each one of them, keep it brief, and then we can review those at our leisure, and then we can, because I don't think that has to be done in a open meeting, and if those are publicly available interviews, then we could just briefly decide who we want later on.
I've actually, I've had an email exchange with with Heather Seitz, the other two I have not talked to, but it may just be worth out worthwhile to just reach out to Tom and William to ask if there are other board appointments that they'd be willing to do, and then, you know, that that would, you know, at least redeploy available resources efficiently.
And and I think the the chair or of, you know, Jay could certainly speak to them, and frequently, you know, when they understand they might have other ideas, the whole idea is they've stepped forward, let's respect them as citizens and potential people who may be foolish enough to be sitting where we're sitting today.
Absolutely. So so just in terms of next steps, why don't I at least touch base with Jay and just sort of ask him, you know, boy, I wish, you know, I wish we had a lawyer, I wish we had a something, and figure that out, and then I'll come back with a what they recommended next steps, and, you know, we would have to come up with the script for an interview, which we're not prepared to do tonight, so that's my hesitation, but that might actually be a nice way to do it.
Let Jay figure it out.
So I have a question, do they have a quorum with the new reappointments?
Oh, yeah, they their full membership is together, yep. Yep.
Yeah, you know, I think it's reasonable to see, you know, either an interview or talk to the chair or to the people themselves. I agree, I would hate to have somebody who really wants to do it and gets, you know, upset, not not throwing their hat in the ring, because it is a, you know, it's a limited pool, and we want to keep the resources and the available talent.
Okay, we'll keep this ball rolling and come up with a plan for our next meeting. If I could move us all along to the fence viewer, oh, I'm sorry, Corey?
Sorry, one thing, there's a, I just, it didn't occur to me earlier, my apologies, for Cable Advisory Committee, I believe there's a small rub, because it's a dual-purpose role, you also serve on the Board of Directors for the Cohasset Community Television Incorporated, it's a separate incorporated, you know, unit, and when I was appointed, we did a separate motion for that appointment as well. Chris, can you speak to, if we have to do a secondary motion for the CCTV as well as Cable Advisory?
So, yeah, Corey, that's actually a good catch, and the answer is yes, should be done, that actually got us into trouble in the past, because we weren't doing that and the board members, so. Yeah, you should probably appoint all three of those folks separately to the Board of Directors of 143TV.
Would somebody like to make a motion to appoint those to the Board of Directors to Cohasset 143TV?
I make a motion, we appoint Corey Evans, David Bigley, and Laura Davidson Kennedy to the Board of Directors for the Cohasset 143TV.
Is there, yeah, all those in favor by roll call vote, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans is being recused.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you, thanks for that catch. Moving right along, I'm going to be fast, because Tanya's waiting in the wings. Fence viewer, we have two reappointments, Glenn Pratt and Annette Satchuk.
I move that we point, sorry, Corey, I move that we appoint Glenn Pratt and Annette Satchuk to one of your appointments as fence viewers.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Okay, I'm going to, we're going to keep moving. Harbor Committee, I think I explained it earlier, there would be two reappointments, one is Jeff Hartwell, the representative from the Rec Commission, and Matt Marr, representative from the Commercial Fisherman. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve Jeff Hartwell for a reappointment for a three-year term as representative from Recreation Department to Harbor Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Next motion on Matt Marr.
I make a motion to appoint representative from the Fisherman for a three-year term to the Harbor Committee, Matt Marr.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Okay, we're get, we're getting there, almost done. We have a one citizen-at-large position on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we have one applicant, Cassie Melatesta.
I make a motion, we appoint Cassie Melatesta as a citizen-at-large to the Master Plan Implementation Committee to a, how long is the term?
I don't know how long the terms are, sorry, I missed that. Hang on one second. I believe there's.
I think she's filling, I think she's filling out an expired term though, Diane, is she filling a slot from somebody who stepped down, or maybe that term is up?
Hang on, hold on, I think Katie's in the wings.
Yeah, Katie says.
It's a three-year term.
Yeah, she's taking over Karen from Karen's.
Yeah, she's taking care Karen's, okay. And I know that Katie has been, has been in touch with Cassie, and she's already expressed interest in serving on the working groups, or one of the working groups. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Great, we're going to hold off on open space when they're, they're going to come at our next meeting, hopefully, and give an update on the committee, and we'll do the appointments that night. Social recycling, I just want to get some framework around that, because that's, that's sort of an out-of-town committee that we send a rep to, and we've had a long-term rep, so I want to make sure that the applicant we have is, you know, ready and ready to roll. So we have the Zoning Board of Appeals, a reappointment of Woody Chittick. So we have the Zoning Board of Appeals, a reappointment of Woody Chidick.
Make a motion, we reappoint Woody Chidick to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year position.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay. And lastly, for tonight, until we get to the Master Plan Implementation discussions on appointments, is the Town Hall Building Committee. There are eight members who served a one-year term and, or a two-year term. I think it was a one-year term. And now this is an appointment for a two-year term. If anybody would like to read the slate as a motion?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to nominate Phil Layer, Wayne Satchuk, Mark Cameron, Garrett Lubitz, Caroline Coffey, Tucker Meehan, Josiah Stevenson, and Sam Wakeman to two-year terms on the Town Hall Building Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, Jack Creighton, aye.
I've been watching some of these meetings and the committee's doing a really great job. So Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Good work, everyone. Thank you. And to Corey's earlier point, there's still some committees open and, and these meetings are always open. And it's a great way to, especially with Zoom now, you can tune in and make your dinner and get a feel for where you might want to participate and and be in touch and reach out to any one of us if you have questions about a committee. And we'll continue this process at our next couple of meetings. So, all right, I got to find my agenda. Okay, we now have a committee.
Cohasset Common Historic District.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry about that. That was on page three.
Make a motion, we appoint Alex VanderWaal to Cohasset Common Historic District for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, and just on that, that is very specifically prescribed, who serves on the Cohasset Common Historic District Committee, and they are looking for a resident of Cohasset who happens to be a Realtor. So think about anyone you might know that might be interested and hopefully somebody watching will be interested and we'll get that position filled. That's an important committee. Thank you. Tanya. Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn the floor over to you for your quarterly update. And I know that since town media have been pretty busy.
We have. And if I could get permission to share my screen, I can pull up a quick update on where we are and some visuals go with that. And I'm going to try to get that done within 10 minutes, no more. And if you want to stop and ask questions between or wait till the end, I leave that to you.
You have the power.
I have the power. I do have the power. All right, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you fullscreen it?
Yep, I'm gonna fullscreen it. Great.
Perfect.
All right, so this is our quarterly update. Oh, to the Board of Selectmen, to the select board that's left over from last time. Apologize. We'll move over that quickly. We're going to quickly provide an update. This is still in Q2. But I think we might want to think about whether we need to do two more before the end of the year. We may have enough to report on because we're very, very busy. We're going to just screen by the Alternative Energy Committee, the Community Choice Electric Aggregation, give you a quick update on where that is. Giving update on solar and the request for proposal that we're, we put out shortly based on the town meeting approval for authorization to lease some of the town sites. And then we'll talk a little bit about the microgrid resiliency framework that we've developed. There's a 45-slide presentation that summarizes our analysis about why we keep having outages and what we can do about it. And we've done some initial outreach to potential partners on that. And then the last is grant opportunities. So this microgrid resiliency framework is actually very timely. Lot of money is out there to help us buy assets and explore how we might implement a municipal microgrid. We are working with National Grid, they're a key part of this. So we will see what we can do. But that's what we're going to talk about. We always start our quarterly updates with a reminder that we are here not just for the town, but also for the town citizens. And we take that very seriously. And we're continuing to try to find ways to look at ways we can save the environment and save money for the town and for our residents and businesses. We've just filled four seats. We are thrilled with the caliber of the people who are interested in working with us. We also, Steve Girardi, who had been on our committee in the past, is now at the Water Commission. He continues to be on the Microgrid Subcommittee. And we are exploring ways that the Water Commission, which is behind the schools, one of our largest users of energy, might be able to save some money with some of our initiatives. So there's a great symbiosis and collegiality extending across the town, which we're thrilled about. Community Choice Aggregation, we are in a waiting zone right now. As you know, we have received approval from the town to pursue the plan. That was done at the town meeting with Steve Wenner's great summary on the Gematron. And it's now, that plan is now at the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities for Massachusetts, and we are waiting for their approval. We're not alone because the plans of Situate, who we intend to go out to bid with, are also in the same queue. But we're sort of in this betwixt and between. Until we get that approval, our broker cannot go out to get bids. And if we don't have the bids, we can't come back to the Board of, to the Select Board to get approval to offer those prices to the town, at which point our citizens get to choose which, which they want to do. So that is really where we are with community choice. Next step, we're waiting for the DPU reviews. And then we will come back to you with some of these, the prices, once we go out to bid. And it's going to be per the plan up to the Select Board to decide whether or not there are good deals to be had and if we should take this out to the town in accordance with the rest of the plan. Any questions on Community Choice Aggregation before I move on?
Just, just a quick question is, is the process at all stalled because of the COVID situation? Or do we anticipate a timely response to that?
Yeah, so it is not in the best of scenarios. It takes about six to eight months to work its way through the DPU dockets. With COVID, there's been a further delay as the state has gotten up and running and using virtual. So the DPU is definitely back in business, but this definitely has been delayed in part because of COVID.
Thank you.
Our solar energy array on the Old Landfill is about to turn three. It is August 30th, 2017, so it's coming up on its third year. And as a toddler, our solar energy array has saved us almost $175,000, which is huge. The production is around 22% of the town's municipal usage. And that's important to note when we talk about the solar RFP because we want to make sure we don't over-purchase solar for the town. But we have about a fourth to a fifth of the town's energy usage currently is being serviced by the solar energy array on the Old Landfill. And it has created almost 2.7 million pounds of carbon dioxide reduction. 2.7 million pounds that would have gone into the air has not, on average, because of the production at the Old Landfill. We're thrilled. And our operator, which is Palmer Capital, who is a developer and the owner and the operator of the facility, has been nothing but professional and responsive. And every time I ask for data, they give it to us in whatever format we ask for. And it's been fabulous. And this gives a little bit of a graph that is on the website. So the town website has an update on what our solar energy array is doing. Again, this was part of the power purchase arrangement, the contract with Palmer Capital, so that information is posted. Anybody can go take a look and see what our solar energy array is doing, including the schools, anybody. It's public information. And this is a chart that I polled today from the website. It shows 2019 had a very strong summer of production. This year was not as much, but we are tracking pretty close to what was expected.
I just want to add that the principal of Palmer Capital is a Cohasset resident, and it's a great source of pride every time I see him this, this particular project, so.
Gordon Dean definitely carried the torch on this one and brought it over the finish line. It's great. And it's great that it's local. And we're hoping that he will be one of the bidders for the request for proposal that we are going to issue shortly. We are finalizing it. We want to talk to you about how you want to be involved in this. Michelle Leary has put together a draft. I've been reviewing it. This issuance of the request for proposal is officially only going to be for the six sites that the town has given pre-authorized approval to lease. And we've talked about that a lot, under 30B. Now, it turns out there's an additional way that we could go forward with using town sites, putting solar energy arrays on the town sites. And that's under the Mass General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 137. We are talking to Select Energy and Power Options about that approach. And that might be a way that we could go forward with some of the other town sites that have not gotten pre-approval of the lease, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't, personally wouldn't feel comfortable doing that unless we had something to compare it to and went through a regular process. So even though the state law would allow us to go in a different approach, I think that we want to explore that, but we want to explore that in connection with an official request for proposal through 30B for the town sites. But in addition, it may be, the town sites are not that great. I think, I'll be honest with you, the roofs are very old on the schools. They're up for replacement in the next 10 years. We know this. The police fire department, then, you know, there might be some issues with using that building, although it does have an opportunity to use it if it's going to stay in place for the next 20 years. And the DPW site has 10 buildings that might not be able to support the solar energy array, but there's still opportunity for being able to expand some of the solar. That said, it just might be better to have an in-town public, private site that, like a large shopping center with a very flat roof, that would be cheaper. So that even though the developer might pay a lease payment to that private owner, that would be, that would not be paid in the town sites, it still might be a better roof, a better situation, and might be able to provide a lower price. Now, in that case, we would not need a request for proposal. But again, we want to use this request for proposal as a way of being able to see what the potential prices are of using the town sites versus a private site. But to the extent the private sites have lower prices for the town to take advantage of, we would want to know that. And we'd want to have Chris Senior, who would sign that contract, look at that. So there's a lot of moving parts, but I'd look at it as a lot of opportunity to really optimize that last 80% of the town's usage to make sure that we get as low a price as possible while simultaneously creating the physical building blocks for reliability and resiliency, which we're thinking about in terms of the microgrid.
A quick question on the issuance, the timeline and their response expectations, so that we can figure out where we might have another meeting to actually specifically talk about, you know, what we need to know about that.
We're trying to, we have to do some posting through state laws, so we're trying to get that posted. Michelle did a great job in getting this out to us. We're trying to finish that up and get it out before the end of the month. And then we would give a three-to-four week response time. And we've already been talking to a lot of potential bidders. We are gathering names of other potential bidders. We would expect to have the proposals in hand by the end of the month of September at the latest. We would then have our evaluation team review those, bring in those companies for interviews, say by the second week in October, and have ideally a final decision by the end of October that we can then finish up negotiations and get a signed contract before the end of the year, so we can take advantage of the federal incentives. Now, what we did in 2012 was we had an independent evaluation committee that had a representative from different parts of the town government. So there was a member from the Select Board was on the evaluation committee. There was one or two representatives from the Alternative Energy Committee. There were representatives from the School Committee. I think we might have had somebody from Planning. So we'd like to do the same type of thing, if you think that's a worthwhile way to go. Or we could have the Alternative Energy Committee in conjunction with the School Committee and the Select Board, who are the ultimate authorizing entities, evaluate the proposals and understand where the potential developers are coming from.
Tanya, would you be getting proposals from, for all three of these different, you know, channels, both town site and public site and private site? Or would you focus on just one of them?
Well, we only have to put out an RFP for the town sites. And we most certainly are going to be doing that. We are going to give, and this is where some of the language is changing from the first draft. We do want to make it clear to bidders that if they have a third site or a private entity site that would be more cost-effective than putting the solar energy array on the town sites, we would love for them to submit that as part of the request for proposal so that it could be duly considered.
As an alternative, okay.
As an alternative. Now, they don't have to do it through that process. They could just come knock on our door, knock on Chris Senior's door and say, Chris, we've got a proposal for you that we're doing outside of the RFP. But I think that the key message we want to get across to them is, we would love for you to find a private site in town that could give us a better price. But if you want to do that, we are going to have, we do prefer to do it in conjunction with the current RFP so that we have a better price comparison to understand what the trade-offs are between paying for a lease versus using a town site that doesn't have a lease payment.
And you're saying town site, but the same thing goes with public site. So if we wanted to do a canopy over a parking lot somewhere, it'd be, we'd be required to go through the RFP process.
So, yes, we do have the canopies. As far as MBTA site, that is a concession that's been awarded to a single entity. And this is where Adam Iman has come in and been great. He actually owns that company. So we are pursuing them to try to see if they can give us a proposal. And in addition to that, the town sites, any parking lot that the town has, whether it's on the school sites or even the town lot, could, in theory, have canopies.
Okay.
And so we have, we are also in the RFP suggesting that there may be other sites in town that we don't have the pre-authorized approval potentially for a lease that they might want to consider. Again, we're trying to gather information and have the developers do the work. Having lots of conversations since February on exactly this topic. And so we're getting a lot of keen interest from a number of different companies.
And you mentioned the MBTA site. Is that our public land or is that something that we've leased out to the MBTA? How are we involved in that canopy?
We're, we're not involved in that canopy at all, except that is here in our town. It is owned by the state, and the MBTA owns it. And we would be an off-taker. So the MBTA has undertaken an effort to try to put canopies on the MBTA sites and allowing for the towns to be the off-taker of the energy.
Okay.
So Hingham, for example, has one, but my understanding is it hasn't been energized yet. There's some issue on that. So is there any other way Select Board would like to be involved?
In any way you need us to be, Tanya. I'm fascinated by this. I don't know what you want us to answer, but I love this entire plan. I think this solar is the future. So you just put up the work.
I, yeah, I see Paul's hand up, but I, I just wrote down that, you know, I think maybe once the RFP is issued, it would be great to have just an update very specifically on this and like what, what the result's going to look like. So we have a better understanding exactly what some next steps are. And to Carrie's point, obviously, we're happy to supportive and very happy to help out. Paul, did you have a question?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So if we put up canopies, let's say in a town parking lot, let's say the schools, and we did not cross any right-of-way, could we just route that to battery storage and use it for daytime battery storage, nighttime use for the schools or for the police or for fire?
The answer is yes. In fact, the schools, which are 75% of the town municipal usage, could be little microgrids in and of themselves. And one of the companies that we're talking to has done a town-school microgrid. Could be little microgrids in and of themselves. And one of the companies that we're talking to has done a town school microgrid project. The microgrid aspect of it would be, it would have the solar, it would have the battery. There are some incentives that have been passed by the state to encourage battery investment in batteries. They're not as generous as the initial draft was hoping. But we're letting the developers put together the right combination. So when we put out the RFP, we are also asking for estimates with batteries. So the solar alone and the solar with batteries. And the reason why we're doing that is it may be that the town could buy a battery and operate it. It just depends how we want to take advantage of the tax credits. But if we could get, for example, a FEMA grant for reliability and resiliency that would pay for seventy-five percent of the battery, these batteries are paying for themselves in one to five years. Depending on where they are. And so we might be able to make that investment, pay our twenty-five percent and have it paid back within a year. And then have the ability to use that battery in conjunction with the storage or with the solar. So we're asking the developers to really be creative and, and think about our larger plan. We are going to give them our microgrid conceptual framework, so they understand our five-year, ten-year goals. And try to get some feedback on how that could work, but those could go directly into the school, even without a net metering credit.
So the, the other thing I wanted to mention, we had a power outage on Sawyer Street just before the meeting. Branch came down. Luckily, there was a National Grid truck right up the street. Why? I don't know. But we had just installed in our house battery storage for basically for a generator. And we saw absolutely no loss of power, but we could hear outside the arcing. So we have our own little mini grid here. And I would also invite the alternative energy committee to come over for an onsite look at what, what the mini, mini grid would be. For a town building, for example.
We would love that. So very good offer.
Yeah, very fancy. Jack has a question.
Yeah, I, I guess it's more of a comment. It's with the era of a lot of grant money, et cetera, and so on. That basically free money has a tendency to affect the economics. And I think the town should be very careful long-term on making sure that we don't get involved in something which would be. Very expensive to the town rate holders or rate payers. If these grants went away and to be completely dependent upon a series of grants. So I think a hard, a hard look ought to be looked at the, at the costs. And particularly because we don't want to do anything on the government level. That's, that saddles our rate payers, our citizens with unexpected high energy bills down the line. And I know Tanya and I have talked about this and I know she understands it, but I think we probably ought to put that out in the open. So everybody in the town knows that the select board is also looking at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Carrie?
Tanya, curious, do you already have certain private sites identified that is a pot, that are possibilities for this, or are you looking for some?
So we, we on the alternative energy committee have amazing members who in their free time drive around town to.
I love that.
And, and, and we even have a couple of draft microgrid plans for some of the sites. That they just in an afternoon were doing a call and they started, you know, pulling it together. So the answer is yes, there's some obvious ones. We have not reached out to any of those third parties. We would like to say if there's somebody who has a great commercial roof. There are some buildings going up. There are some existing commercial areas. We would definitely, I'm the lumber, you know. Hingham Lumber is an example of a great roof that's southern facing. You know, this would be great if these locations are interested. We would love for them to raise their hand and ideally we'd have a list that we could provide to developers. Or what we have said to developers is you go find them. And we don't want to take away a competitive advantage that a developer might have. But we've made it very clear to them that we are interested in looking at third-party sites, especially if they're more cost competitive.
And it, it may make more sense to let the, some of the respondents identify, self-identify, you know, identify the sites before. You know, a public meeting opens up talking about some private property, so.
That's why I'm not mentioning any names.
Exactly. Thank you. I'll let you continue.
Okay. Great. So to the microgrid resiliency framework, there's, as I've said, a forty-six slide presentation that we put together. That the alternative energy committee approved in May. We have sent that to Tracy as backup to you. I don't know if you've received a copy before, as some of our other meetings have come before you. But it really does a good job laying out what our problem is and why. And that moving to a town municipal light company may not be the right solution. But we will be exploring that as well as an alternative. But all of that said, we've got a microgrid subcommittee, which includes Steve Girardi, Mike Schmidt, Tyler Thibault. These should all look familiar to you. Two of them were just appointed. We've got the conceptual framework that we've distributed before. We redistributed tonight. And we've been in a lot of outreach and communication. We have a vision. It's very easy to talk about this vision with National Grid, with the vendors that we've been talking to, with MAPS, with the state. We've been to microgrid conferences and, and talking to them about what we're thinking of doing. And if everybody gets very excited, we've also talked to some of the town talent. That have worked at, for example, Tesla or have been looking at vehicle-to-grid technology. So we're really trying to take advantage of all the assets that this town has to offer. And it's very early stages because the reality is we've got two big roadblocks. The tariff structure right now doesn't allow for it. And National Grid has the monopoly franchise territory rights. So anything we did right now as part of phase one or phase two would, could not cross a public right-of-way. But that said, there's still a lot of areas that we've identified that could be microgrids without crossing a right-of-way. And we've submitted grants and have been successful. So we'll talk about the grants. I'm going to skip over this reliability, resiliency and, and the definition between the two. I think it's important to understand that they are distinctly different. With reliability being you don't go down in the first place and resiliency being how quickly you come back up. And on the resiliency, I will say, out of National Grid's one thousand one hundred and sixty-two feeder lines, we are ranked number second and number fourth worst. On how long it takes us to get back up.
No surprise.
I mean, we feel it. The fact that this town has thirteen backup generators is not normal. World country. The fact that most of the large houses have to invest in backup generator, that some of our. Most disadvantaged or immunosuppressed people who need oxygen and can't have the lights go out, have to have the power. And they invest thousands, tens of thousands of dollars in backup generation. That's not right. So we're trying to figure out a solution to that. At the same time, those existing investments. And certain people who have Tesla walls in their garage, for example, can be a part of the solution. So we're thinking about how to take advantage of that as well. So our conceptual framework, I'm, I'm going to glance over this quickly, but we're looking at demonstration projects as part of phase one. Phase two builds out more into different types of campuses. Phase three, we have to be able to go across public rights away. And then we can start connecting these mini-grids into a muny grid, which would be a municipal wide grid. So we're looking at a phased approach. Phase one is making great progress. We have two sites, the DPW transfer station, where existing three-year-old, almost three-year-old solar energy array is. And then Elm Street, the police fire department, we submitted on April thirteenth. So imagine what we're doing April thirteenth. We were in the midst of COVID. Michelle Larry stepped it up. We put together two requests, two proposals for the Mass CEC to do a study grant, seventy-five thousand dollars each. I felt a little greedy doing two, but I thought, you know what, they might not get enough. And sure enough, they got requests for seven out of the eight grants that they had available. We were given both. And they were very excited about how we structured it, which was these are the bookends of our townwide mini-grid. So we have the study grant money. We're starting to look at those two sites to understand GE Consulting is a consultant they've assigned to us. And we're going to have a kickoff in the next week or two to start looking at, can these be used as a microgrid? What kind of equipment would we put on? And from that, if we do develop and move forward. And it makes sense to do so economically, financially, and ideally we'd get grant money to help do that. We'd be able to get some more information about how we might roll this out going forward. So lots of grants that we have been pursuing, we did win the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two study grants for those two sites. We did a MAPS application for technical assistance. We were granted six thousand dollars. But then we ended up converting that into a green communities grant for something else that we had applied for in the past, but not used. Which was fine because by that point we had already identified solar sites. And we looked at potentially doing a technical assistance grant for the RFP, but decided that our time would be better used just simply drafting the RFP and rolling it out. And there's been a lot of effort on our part trying to look at the electric vehicle charging stations. The VW settlement includes money for towns and National Grid has money through the tariff. They're different programs. They have different implications, as Jack said, different obligations from the town. And we're making sure that we're very clear about what those are before we go asking for more electric vehicle charging stations. But that very well could be part of the plan because as I've said, in the twenty twenties. When the power goes off, it's not just going to be about the lights. It's not going to be up at the heat. It's not going to be about your computers and being able to work from home. It's going to be about your car. And so having electric vehicle charging stations as part of our microgrid solution is a key component as well. Big money MVP action grant. The town went forward asking for a study planning grant. To look at potentially relocating the police fire station. We added on to that what we call our embers grant, which asks for potentially a lot of money to examine a battery storage investment. I don't know if it ultimately got submitted, but we have it in the hopper ready to go. In case another opportunity arises, but we need to understand the implications. Obligation would be. The other one we're really looking at right now is the FEMA grants. They have five hundred million in fiscal year twenty twenty for building resiliency and reliability in communities. And the language is exactly on this microgrid type of project. There is a twenty-five percent match, which can be mined. And it is, as I said, focused on microgrid issues and we've given this link here. So we need to, as a committee, understand, again, you've given us marching orders to focus on resiliency and reliability. But we need to work closely with the town and planning because there are. Plans in place and needs that the town has that we're just, we're one small piece of the town. So we would like to make sure that we're educating the town and planning on what the opportunities are in the electricity space. That are associated with the reliability, resiliency, but at the same time, understand what the town's priorities are. So that we can coordinate our efforts to go after money. And of course, Jack, we're not going to look to commit the town to a twenty-five percent out-of-pocket match unless it has a positive. Return on investment with a very low period of time payback.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tanya. Much appreciated. This is really important stuff. One of the questions I have, and it's, it's actually not, I don't think it's a question we can answer right now, but you know, this is pretty meaty stuff. You know, I, I don't want to lose sight of this. We're going to be talking next, and it is getting late. A little bit about these master plan implementation committee working groups, and I think there's probably. Some cross-pollination that we should consider, maybe not in a formalized way, but you know, as we talk about Elm Street corridor. And, and how that relates to what might happen to the police fire station in the future and where, you know, where we might build, if we're building things in the future where roofs might work. So I want to make sure we keep the conversation open. And I guess, Chris, one of the, one of my fears or one of my concerns is that. You know, we don't tax an already taxed staff to some degree. And whether, you know, this is a committee that really should have some kind of staff assignment on, on an ongoing basis. And, and you don't have to answer it now, but again, I don't want things to fall through the cracks. Because this committee's often doing amazing things and then we, we don't have the bandwidth to, to actually act on things. Does that make sense, Chris?
I'm just sitting here nodding my head.
So you know what I'm trying to say. You can decipher, Diane. Yeah. Anyway, thank you. Does anybody have any last minute questions? Okay, Tanya, we'll, we'll have you back soon.
Great. No, that's great. And we're communicating with the school committee. We have two liaisons right now. Advisory has a liaison. Hopefully we'll get a liaison from the select board when you're ready. And obviously anybody can tune in anytime. We tend to meet the second Wednesday of the month via Zoom. But with our new committee members, we're going to ask them what works for them. So we're trying to do one meeting a month at a specific. Type of day.
And, and if you could just ping me, I, I do think that once the RFP is out and you're anticipating responses for a certain date. We, that might be a time for us to discuss both a liaison and maybe somebody that can sit in at the, the, the respondent. Yeah, evaluations, just so that we understand some of the mechanics of what needs to take place going forward. So anyway, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good job.
So Board, thank you Hank for hanging in there. I, I really hope we can get out of here not very soon after ten o'clock. Cause we've been at this since six, six PM. So I, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and Miriam, just I think with a quick update on our, our goals. And again, this is another thing that we'll probably have a dedicated agenda item to at our next meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. I, we have been working at staff level on fleshing out the selectmen's goals and objectives. I do think that with a couple of other things are down your agenda tonight, I think we'll continue this conversation. But we just wanted to give a flavor of a couple of things. And I have Miriam here, who's been sharing, she's, we're, we're kind of dividing and conquering on the three big goals here. Don has kind of overseen the financial one, obviously. And as a team, I think on the community health, because it's so big, and we're going to put that up in just a second. And then we, we have obviously the, the public work schools, which are, again, you're going to be appointing, or at least you're planning to, to do some more work on those tonight. I think that we're going to sort of roll that back into this bigger proposal. Bring it all back to you for the next meeting. But I will start, so I will, do you want me to just pop this up, Miriam? We can talk off it?
Please.
All right.
So our first, your first goal was, you know, to take concrete steps to create and support policies and practices. That foster all facets of healthy community. So we've identified the seven areas. Public health, afforded, affordable housing, economic vitality, the response to addiction, mental health and substance abuse issues. Community engagement, inclusion and diversity, open and accessible government. This is like seven different goals, I have to tell you, although it, you know, it all comes together to really support the, the actual goal. Public health has identified very concrete, short-term and long-term goals. As you can imagine with COVID and triple E and some of the other health trends and issues. That wasn't a real hard thing for them to do. I'm not saying that achieving them won't take some work. But they have identified short-term and long-term goals that support this one. Affordable housing, again, Lauren is, you know, continuing the work that she has been doing. To support that subsection. Economic vitality, we need the board's help. You know, we're going to need to understand exactly where this is focused and, and who can lead that. That is not an area that I feel that I can lead. So in response to the addiction, mental health and substance abuse issues. This is a twofold approach. One, we started a lot of programs prior to COVID. Those programs are all in place right now. They continue to do what they can. While we have the social distancing requirements. We are, you know, still plugging away on this survey. So that we can gather community information about the youth center. And in addition to that, we are doing. An interdepartmental approach to having youth center type activities on a virtual basis. So that's where we are with that. When it comes to community engagement, this is another one that I think, you know, the board needs to. To tell us just, you know, what exactly. to tell us just, you know, what exactly you would like us to focus on to help, you know, recruit and train residents to take part in local government.
I just want to, I just want to add a couple of quick things. One is on the economic vitality. I mean, this, that particular piece, we're going to be talking about because economic development is one of the master plan subgroups. So like that could be, that, that could live, you know, under that. It's meeting those goals. That committee is going to be working on those issues. And then with respect to community engagement, when we had that discussion, a lot of that was just about recruiting new people to serve on committees or having committees work with community organizations that are already in existence to address some of these problems so that everything isn't necessarily from within town hall, but, but that we're able to kind of triage and partner and all that kind of stuff. So that's something that this board really does need to spend some time on at a, at a community meeting. So those things I think are going to be covered, at least economic will be covered with the master plan implementation work and community health is, and again, with these, with these appointments on these committees, there's just, we just have yet to perfect or come up with the right way to manage all of that because it's a lot of work. So stay tuned. That'll be an agenda item. Corey, I see your hand up.
I think Carrie, I think you were first, Carrie. Did you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Carrie.
Yeah, Katie Dugan just replied in her comments that economic vitality can be tackled in part by the Cohasset Economic Task Force, which we, up next on the agenda, which you said that I am.
Yep. Yep. I, I just, just, just as a practice to those people that are typing in questions, thank you. I really want to make sure the select board members have an opportunity to, to ask questions before we take any other public comments. Jack?
Yeah, guess what I'm going to ask about? The youth center survey, how many survey responses have been received? Has there been follow-up surveys sent out to encourage that? And so do we have a number and where are we on the conclusions?
The answer to your question is we have sent it out. We have done a number of different requests for people to, to try to get that survey to people beyond the first initial respondents. I do not have the exact number for you tonight. I can get that for you tomorrow and send it to you.
That would be very, very nice. This has been going on for a very, very long time since January. So it actually goes back to the previous September. And again, I say it pretty much every meeting, you know, this is a real crisis for, for the families whose kids are vulnerable. And I do not want to look at a parent and say, you know, we almost got around to dealing with the opioid before it hit your kid. So again, and I wish I don't have to keep saying it every time, but I think everybody knows that I will until we get a, a teen center. Thank you.
I do, I do think too, as soon as we understand what the fall is going to look like in terms of schools and building usage and getting back together, that, you know, this is something we can, we can carry forth. Corey?
Yeah, sorry. I was just moving around. The, on the idea of community engagement, I mean, so step one was obviously to get people, but this really is a, going to be a year-long goal, which includes Diane, what you said earlier, making our committees function better together. We don't want committees that exist in silos. So, and that's going to take a lot of work from town staff as well to, you know, really assist and, and get us into, you know, regular updates, regular back and forths, regular, you know, just discussions. The second thing though, and this has been, I know that we've mentioned it and I've mentioned it a few times, is improving the ability of our, of our town residents to engage in governmental things. And that's especially electronically. And this is something I'm really glad we're going to take care of the economic thing today, but it would be nice if we started discussions about, you know, maybe charging, figuring out a way to improve accessibility on electronic platforms quicker, rather than just kind of waiting on some vendor to give it to us. So that's part of that goal for me. And, you know, we should just keep that in mind as we move forward through the year.
Yep.
So I'm going to put this back up on the screen. So I need the board to give us one vote. I want you to validate that these seven items are what you want us to be working on. And then we're going to circle back, as Miriam said, at a future meeting. Hold on one second. There we go. So public health, affordable housing, economic vitality, response to addiction, mental health and substance abuse issues, community engagement, inclusion, diversity, and open and accessible town. Is that, is that the board's work? I mean, okay.
Yes.
Absolutely. Those are right from my notes. Like those are the things that I remember writing down at our workshop.
I just want to make sure we captured it because a couple of things had overlapped a bit. So.
Yep.
So as, as Miriam was saying, we are going to circle back again. It's, it's late. And you have another committee, two things, big things on the agenda. So we are kind of incorporate all this economic vitality, all the economic development task force work back into this because as part of the presentation, so you kind of have a nice big package of things. And I also just want to underscore that it's important to remember the incredible work the Safe Harbor group is doing right now. Hey, no one's sitting on their hands. The Safe Harbor group has been working incredibly hard and all those volunteers. And it's, it's deeply disappointing to hear anyone disparaging their work and suggesting that that's.
Chris, I did not disparage Safe Harbor and you know I didn't. I'm a big supporter of Safe Harbor.
To suggest, to suggest that things are not happening, select me, great.
Excuse me.
It's deeply disappointing. I have to stick up for stuff.
I'm, excuse me. Enough. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Both of you. Thank you.
But I will speak. And, and just, and changing the subject to Safe Harbor, I am a tremendous supporter of Safe Harbor. I am fighting to get something done. And to assume that when I bring this up, that I'm attacking Safe Harbor is, is words do not. What I want to know is when it's going to get done, Chris. You're the town manager. You've had clear instructions for close to a year from two successive board of selectmen. To get it done is a priority. And all we hear is, well, we don't know the number of surveys. Can we get something done and can we get it done soon? Okay?
Select me, Creighton. I'm sorry, Chairman. Chair, Chair.
Whatever I am.
It's deeply disappointing to me to have you continually to be a, a false narrative that things aren't happening.
Point of order. I don't, I don't find.
It's in front.
You can mute people.
I, I, I'm doing so. I, Chris, I'm sorry. I'm going to, I'm just going to end this right now. I, I understand there, there has been a lot of work doing this. We're never going to open a teen center in the middle of a pandemic. There is work. Miriam is going to get the numbers of the surveys. We'll find out where we are with that. We reset that number a few meetings ago and we're going to move on. Thank you. As you have asked, you want us to take a vote on those seven priorities and I would.
Yeah, I think it would be, if you would be willing to do that, I think it would be helpful.
I'd be happy to if somebody would like to make a motion.
I make a motion to, for the select board to approve the priorities as listed in the presentation that was just given to us. I don't have that in front of me because it's not on the screen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, everybody saw the seven and are, are in a position to vote. So I will start with the, Jack. Sorry, Jack, you were muted.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Thank you. And we will give more meat to these bones in, in subsequent meetings. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, Corey, I'm, I'm going to invite, if we could bring Katie Dugan in. And Corey, if you, if you're okay, I'm going to give you the floor on kind of you and Jack on, with Katie's assistance if needed, on just the charge that's in front of us for the economic task force, which is basically going to be operating similarly to the master plan implementation committee working groups that we discussed at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Hi Katie, I'm going to.
Do you need, do you need to put anything up on the screen, Corey? Do you need me to give you the?
I have it, but if you want to put it up for public consumption, I think that'd be great.
What exactly am I putting up? Just.
It should be in the packet. It was economic, Coasette Economic Task Force four was the file name.
One second. You can start and I'll see what I.
Sure. Yes. So thank you to Katie and Amy on planning and, and, you know, Lauren Lind and just, you know, I can't name everybody. It's like an Oscar speech here for the amount of people that, that we got input from. And, and what we work to do here with, it's charged as the Cohasset Economic Task Force. And it's a very, very specific list of, of tasks and goals for us to better understand what the economic situation in our town is. And I think Diane, somebody mentioned earlier that, you know, one of the challenges is we just, we don't really know what we don't know yet. And any discussion about economic, you know, vitality in, in our town is going to start with an understanding of, of the things that are unique about our town, the things that we want to focus on, the ways that we can make existing businesses survive and thrive. And including what kind of businesses our town would like to see. So kind of to begin those discussions, we charged a very specific task force here to conduct a series of, including like a self-assessment with very deliverable time, times, you know, deadlines, 60 days, six months. And with the idea that after 12 months, we will take all the work product from this task force, package it back up and bring it back to the select board here and along with master plan, let it grow into what is going to be the future economic council or forum or whatever we feel we need.
Great. Does anybody have any, any, any color, any comments? Jack?
Jack is.
We're trying to get it up on the screen too, by the way. Sorry, Jack, you're, yeah.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. By the way, I think everybody should know that Corey has done a tremendous amount of work. He reached out to the South Shore Chamber of Commerce to Katie. Katie's done an awful lot of work. This is very important. And a little bit of in the background, I think citizens would be like to know that we have started with the concept of what exactly is this town, this little town that we feel is so special? And to make sure that the economic fits in with the town that we all love and wish to preserve. So that's a very good conceptual framework, but I think we really should give some good credit to Corey because he has really been in the trenches, working very hard on that. And anybody who'd like to join this, this is going to be important and it's conceptual. So we need the, we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, Corey, and everybody that's been on, you know, trying to give some shape to next steps so that we can actually get things done. And I think in this particular case with economic development to, to take this approach, I mean, we were, you know, we wanted to get an economic development committee off the ground as soon as possible in response to everything. But the truth of the matter is we're dealing with a couple of different issues, one of, one of which is kind of assessing where we're at, assessing where we're at right now in this unusual circumstance where it's impossible to, you know, have a thriving business. And then of course, the, the bigger economic development discussion. So thank you. So I would like to, I assume everybody on the board read this. And if, if you have any questions specifically about the task force, force charge, ask them now. Otherwise I'd like to move this into existence with a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the economic development charter as presented.
Second.
Is there a second? And just for clarification, is the Cohasset Economic Task Force?
That's right. You got it.
Thank you. I'm reading it. And we'll start with a vote with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Katie, good?
Great.
Thank you, Katie. You did good.
So.
May I just mention one thing about the committee? Now that it's charged, I mean, we do have, and I should have spoke about this during my recap, my apologies. There will be two citizen at large positions that we will appoint. We do have one applicant and, you know, we, we are really looking for if anyone's out there, you know, someone who is a business leader in town, who is a resident of town. But also we made a very specific carve out in the language of this, that we are open and we want participation. It's got to be ex officio, but from business owners that aren't residents. There are a lot of great business owners in town that may live in Hall or Situate or any of the neighboring towns. And we are, we specifically have included those people. So our town relies on, on both people that live in town and people that live out of town to run their businesses. So, you know, even if you are not a resident, please feel free to reach out and we could use, you know, your brain on this stuff.
Katie, I have in front of me the, the outline for appointments for these various working groups. And I, I, I don't know whether I have an older version, but for the economic task force, if, if the board is okay, I would like to go ahead and make whatever appointments we can so that this committee can start, start moving. We have one citizen at large position. We would, I would love for two select board members to raise their hand. I'm going to hold out for another position on another priority. And then also I don't have the liaison from the master plan implementation committee in front of me. I think it's Amy.
It is Amy. Can, can I just step back? So before we start asking the board of selectmen to volunteer, there are five things that the master plan implementation committee is looking for assistance directly from the select board. There are two spots on the just approved Cohasset Economic Task Force, and that's what's up for discussion. But before you commit to that, just so you're aware, we're about to ask you about five seconds later for one volunteer to join the zoning bylaw working group. One volunteer to join Elm Street Corridor Working Group. And then we would also like, based on your charge of the affordable housing steering committee that was revised on August 4th, that liaison step forward from the select board to that committee specifically. Because if you remember, we, we added three liaison positions to the affordable housing steering committee. One from master plan implementation, one from sewer and one from your committee. So there are five spots, affordable housing, Elm Street zoning, and two on economic task force that we're going to ask you to step forward that are all part of these master plan implementation priorities that we've brought forward.
Thank you for adding that context. And just in case you're keeping track, the one item or the one implementation group that is not on this list for discussion tonight is regional sewer. And we have two meetings scheduled with the sewer commission coming up in April. Don't I wish it were April? And I'm talking April 2021. And we'll, we'll flesh out how, how that process will work and what kind of a structure we'll, we'll put into play for that. So today I would love to find, and there's five of us, and have each of us take one of these positions. There's a lot of other liaison roles to alternative energy and everything else that we'll talk about once we get these working groups kind of off and running. So, does that make sense to everybody?
Can I ask just a little, Diane, a little clarification and from Katie? On these other subcommittees, are they liaison to another committee or are you a working member of that other committee? Like for instance, you know, I participated in rezoning a couple of Boston neighborhoods longer ago than I'd like to admit to. But I would not want to get involved in having a right to rezoning, but I have some perspective. So I'm asking about what the time commitment would be, Katie?
So on zoning bylaw working group, specifically, I mean, as you know, each of these were charged specifically. So this is, these are, these are standing working groups that are charged for a year. And we said that master plan implementation would come back every year and request a recharge. The lift on zoning bylaw working group, I would say, is a long, slow burn in that there is going to be a lot of work, but we need to sort of first organize ourselves and then begin to pick it off. I don't know if that answers your question, but the, when you are on these working groups, you are a member of those working groups. You're not a liaison. You're there to do the shovel and the dirt lifting work. So the way I would think about all of these is that, at least with Elm Street zoning and economic development, prepare yourselves to roll up your sleeves, to be very honest. Because we need people that are, that are ready to, to help with the work. Affordable housing is more of a liaison role.
I'm going to roll down my sleeves at this.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would, I would like to just kind of throw in some thinking that I have if it, if it helps other people think about. I would personally love to do the Elm Street Corridor Working Group, having worked in the village for many, many years, and, and just that, that sort of, you know, the, the task at hand there, that's something I'm super interested in. Jack, I was actually hoping you would bring up your experience in zoning because I really think you would be great at that. So.
Great. You would do that.
Yeah. And, and again, I say this all the time, but I mean, we all are, we wouldn't be sitting here for four hours and 10 minutes every couple of weeks if we weren't really involved and invested in all of these issues. So it's going to be really important that while these working groups are working groups and roll up the sleeve groups, that, that we, we keep each other informed about what's going on in, in the other committees. So none of us should ever feel like we're, we're not part of, because we are. So, so Paul, Paul and Kerry, any thoughts from you?
I'm happy to go wherever I'm needed and be a switch hitter if we need, depending on what everyone else wants. I'm actually really interested in all of these working groups. So whatever you need me for, I'm flexible.
I wouldn't mind the affordable housing.
Okay. So, so let's, let's just start there. Paul, you want me to slate you there? Jack, are you okay with zoning?
I'm okay with zoning, but I don't want to leave Corey in the lurch, although he's doing all the work anyway.
I don't know what I'm doing with zoning, so I, you know.
I mean, Corey, I can help you with economic development too.
Oh, wait a minute. Corey's saying, can I get rid of him?
Just don't give me zoning.
If Corey's willing to stay with economic development, and how can he not?
He's very good at that.
He gets, he gets Kerry there. And, and I think we've got a, an amazing group. Sound good?
That sounds fantastic. And thank you, guys. I mean, I don't, I know it's 10:08 and heavy lifting sounds super heavy right now. And, but I do think that these are, the exciting thing is that there, there's work to be done. And so that we can chip away at it, we'll make great progress.
So Katie, would we be, would we be ready to just go through this and say for the affordable housing steering committee, and just put the names in and where there's holes, or if you haven't heard from the individual committees that have representation on these, that we just, you know, wait on that?
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. And again, I don't know how often you guys appoint liaisons. Like, for example, do you need to approve Jen Boylan as lead, as master plan implementation committee liaison to affordable housing steering committee? Or is that my job at master plan implementation committee to have that conversation? And Jen volunteered.
Because, you're right, an affordable housing steering committee is, it's, it's separate. It's not one of these working groups. So I think the only thing we need to do is to, is, is to kind of appoint Paul as that liaison to affordable housing. Does that make sense?
No, that does make sense. Thank you.
Is there a motion to do so? To appoint Paul Schubert as the selectman representative to the master. Somebody say so.
I would like to appoint Dr. Schubert to the, what am I appointing him to?
Affordable housing steering committee liaison.
Oh, the Affordable Housing Steering Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, beginning with Jack?
Jack Creighton says aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye. Oh, sorry, Paul. I got excited.
Okay, we're there. That's excellent. So moving right along to Elm Street Corridor, Katie, it looks to me that there's, do we have a citizen-at-large?
We do. My understanding is that Mark, Mike Sardina has submitted an application for the citizen-at-large term. So this is, the slate on this is, been fully defined. It's Tim Davis from Master Plan Implementation Committee, Clark Brewer from Planning Board, Diane Kennedy from the Select Board, Mike Sardina as the citizen-at-large. My understanding is he submitted application. And then as ex officio from the town, we have Lauren Lind, Jason Federico, and Chief Sylvia.
Would somebody like to move that slate?
Did we get an application for, for Mike?
So Mike Sardina, he was listed as the harbor, as an applicant for the harbor committee. Remember, I said there was somebody that didn't fill, so.
We do, there is an application.
Okay, thank you.
It might have been just misclassified. So assuming that nobody has any other questions, if somebody would like to move that slate, and you can just say so.
Move that slate to the.
Okay, Elm Street Corridor Working Group, is there a second?
Second.
Jack?
Oh, aye. Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
I'm trying to legally cut corners so we can get to a conclusion for this meeting. The next one is the zoning bylaw working group. Katie, can you just let us know if there's any holes there?
So the only hole that I have is the zoning board of appeals representative, and Woody and I just haven't connected. We've been trading emails and we will connect this week. So if we could hold on that spot, I will get back to you. But the rest of the slate is clear. It'll be myself from Master Plan Implementation Committee, from the Planning Board, Tom Callahan and Paul Cleary, ZBA is TBD, Peter Pescatori from Open Space and Recreation, Jack Crichton from the Select Board, and then ex officio, we have Jen Oram and Bob Egan.
Perfect. Is there?
Bob Egan is, his position is now vacant.
My unders, I don't know the status on, on Bob Egan. My.
Bob's a dentist's retirement, but he hasn't retired yet.
That's what I thought. I thought Bob was still around and there was a, there's a open.
It's, it's an ex officio position, so it's, it doesn't necessarily need to be part of the slate anyway. Those are just the kind of staff positions that would be working with that group. So other than the staff, would anybody like to move that? And there's a TBD on the zoning board representation? Any mo, motion?
I'm going to make a motion. We approve the slate for the.
Zoning bylaw working group?
The zoning bylaw working group, as mentioned.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a vote, starting with Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Terrific. We're making tremendous progress. Thank you all so much. We just have the economic task, economic task force to go.
Yep. And so we. One, we have Amy Glassmeyer from Master Plan Implementation Committee. We just got Corey Evans and Kerry Thompson from the Select Board. Thank you. And my understanding is that we have one applicant for citizen-at-large. Corey, it's John Letholl. Is that how you pronounce his name?
Yes.
And I, I don't know, I have not spoken to John yet. So I don't, Corey, I don't know if we're ready to nominate him tonight or not.
So, yeah, he submitted an application with resume, fully qualified for the position. I believe he comes endorsed by Jack and Diane as well.
Yeah, yeah. I've reached out to him and I told him that, you know, assuming there weren't any questions or concerns, that we would likely appoint him to this group tonight.
Okay. No, that's, that's great. So I think what we have open is, just to be clear to the community, we have one citizen-at-large who needs to be a resident of Cohasset for the economic task force. And then, as Corey mentioned, there are ex officio positions for business owners who are non-residents of Cohasset but have a vested interest in the economic task force. And we love that to be a reasonable number. So for tonight's slate, we'd like a poll for Amy Glassmeyer, Corey Evans, Kerry Thompson, and John Letholl.
We, we also have a slot for, for town staff. We don't really need to do that now, right?
Well, the town staff doesn't need to be, it's ex officio. So we had discussed having Chris Senior just as kind of lighten the load on, on Lauren and some of the others who are tasked with many other aspects. So that, that's who we'd kind of circled against that. But again, it's, for tonight's slate, it's Amy, Corey, Kerry, and John that we're asking approval for.
Okay. Would anybody like to move that slate for the Cohasset Economic Task Force?
I'd like to move that slate for the economic task force.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor. Jack?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Kerry Thompson, aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Katie. Thank you for your hard work, for letting us do the speed round on this. And I, let's get to work. These are really exciting initiatives ahead of us.
Great. No, thank you. I'll let my committee know and I'll certainly, I'll circle back to you guys after I talk to Woody. We can get that dialed in.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along to the Mass Works Grant update and recommendation letter. Chris, if you want to tee this up, I believe there are probably some people in attendance that have, you know, would like to at some point speak. So let's, why don't you walk us through the important things that we need to do? And, and then we'll have a discussion and then take some public input.
Okay, so this was discussed at the last meeting of August, and the board then green lighted a preparation of an application. And tonight I have Jason Federico from our Public Works Department, and Jim Reardon from Weston and Sampson, who are prepared to present and walk through the grant and application. This is a Mass Works grant that would pay for infrastructure, it's water, sewer, sidewalks, and advocacy for a potential traffic light at Sawyer. And through, this is the corner piece, the Stop and Shop Plaza, but the, is the primary parcel. But it also includes, the sewer line runs all the way from Sawyer up to the Tupelo Road pump station, and the water maintenance to Pond Street from Sawyer Street. That's an important connection piece as well. And the sidewalk from, from where it ends at the moment on Sawyer Street at Fair Oaks, to connect down to 3A. And that would allow a crosswalk to connect to sidewalks that need to be built as the ongoing project at the Stop and Shop Plaza gets done, and potentially adding a strip right along the 3A piece as well. So, so I have the PowerPoint, Jason. Do you want me to run it? Do you want to run it?
If you don't mind, can Jim run his?
Yeah, that's fine. If he is the most recent one, I'll get, I'll let him make it easier. So basically, what the, what the, where tonight is, is a letter of support. And I'll have Jason run through it. But we also have a couple of residents, by the way, that, that, there's a group of residents on Red Fox Lane, three of them that have sent a letter of support for this application. The Water Department, the Water Commissioners have voted a letter of support for this project. And I spoke to Senator O'Connor's office today, and they are prepared to. And I give, with that, I'm happy to turn over to Jason and let him go, and he and Jim.
I'll turn it over to Jim for the presentation, and I'm here for questions as they come or at the end of the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason. Thank you, Chris, as well. And thank you, Select Board, for allowing us to present on this this evening. This is an update on the Mass Works Grant application. As Chris mentioned earlier, this is for Route 3A infrastructure improvements. My name is Jim Reardon. I'm a senior project manager at Weston. So first, I'd like to get right down to business this evening. What we're asking for is approval for the town manager to sign and submit approximately a $3.7 million grant request. We need your commitment and support to do this, Select Board. We're looking for letters of support from the town manager and from the Select Board. This is something that's really quite of the essence. The grant application is due on August 28th, which is, of course, Friday at midnight. Few facts about the Mass Works program. If you're not already familiar with it, it's about a 10-year-old program. It's highly competitive. Last year, 40% of the applications they were received, that were received, were funded. There's a good reason why it's highly competitive, of course. It has, in the last year, funded $456 million in grant awards, leveraging $9.00 billion in matching funds. So it's quite a lucrative program. They emphasize unlocking shovel, shovel-ready development projects, specifically multifamily, mixed-use, and job creation type projects. They do this by funding infrastructure improvements, roadway infrastructure improvements, walkability, connectivity, sustainability, including water and wastewater improvement projects. This is the area that we're talking about, Route 3A in, around the Sawyer Street area. And specific improvements that we're talking about are road and utility improvements. In total, these infrastructure improvements are about $4.7 million. So part of this will be done through the grant and part of it will be matched, that will come from the town. They include sidewalks on Sawyer Street and Route 3A, as well as a signalized crossing. This will improve walkability, connectivity to Whitney and Theroux Woods Trail System. In part, this will replace an old asbestos concrete water line and install a sewer line to eliminate septic waste impacts. There is currently ongoing a $10 million development project, mixed-use development project that includes 20 units, five of which are affordable. This will be supported by these infrastructure improvements. So it's very important for the continuation of this mixed-use development project to have these infrastructure improvements to make it viable. This project will help the town of Cohasset meet a variety of planning and other departmental goals. The Water Department, protecting water supply and allowing for future connections to all properties that may contribute to decreased water quality in Peppermint Brook, replacing aging infrastructure, as I mentioned a few moments ago. The replacement of the asbestos concrete line that exists currently along 3, 3A. It'll help implement your open space plan by installing sidewalks that will allow for connectivity to your trail system. It'll help implement your housing production plan, which specifically identifies the northern portions of Route 3A as suitable for mixed-use housing development, and specifies priority strategies relative to this proposal, including allowing denser, denser housing pipes and mixed uses along 3A. Also, it calls for diversification of housing stock, which is part of this project. It'll help to implement the regional sewer plan. It'll help to implement a number of master plan goals and strategies. Land use goal one, planning and investing strategically for smart growth in order to preserve Cohasset's community character. Strategy 1.3, reviewing the zoning bylaw to allow greater housing options along 3A. Housing goal one, which is diversifying Cohasset's housing stock to promote increased options for households of varying sizes and incomes and tenures and ages. Strategy 1.2, which is identifying areas to use zoning and other incentives to encourage the missing metal typologies. That is, those types of buildings that fall in between the typical single-family house and maybe a small-scale multifamily building. So this will help to support that. Goal two, an increase in the supply of deed-restricted affordable housing. Housing strategy 2.4, providing municipal support to prospective affordable housing developments. Housing strategy 2.7, maintaining safe harbor under Chapter 40B. Economic development goal one, creating a variety of economic incentives in town to satisfy the citizens' desire for more varied experiences, particularly along Route 3A. Transportation and circulation goal one, improving pedestrian connectivity throughout the town. Strategy 1.2, improving safety, mobility, and access on 3A for all types of transportation. Strategy 1.3, constructing pedestrian facilities in high-traffic locations. Goal three, improving roadways in the town. And last but not least, public health goal Goal three, improving roadways in the town and last but not least, Public Health Goal three, prioritizing active transportation such as walking and biking and open space access to promote physical activity and exposure to outdoor natural environments. By applying for this grant, it doesn't prevent you from applying for other grants. For example, if the town receives one Mass Work grant, that doesn't preclude it from applying again. Other funding sources can be pursued in the future as well, for example, the Elm Street Corridor project could fit into some of the following funding opportunities, Mass Downtown Initiative, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, the Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities, Complete Streets, State Revolving Fund or Chapter 90. So in conclusion, I'd like to review our request, which is for approval for the town manager to sign and submit this $3.7 million grant application. Again, we need your commitment and support to make this happen. We'd like to get letters of support from the town manager and yourselves as the Select Board. And I'd like to point out again how important this project is. If you include the infrastructure improvements and the development project, this is a nearly $15 million project, it'll really help support quite a bit of valuable economic activity and promote number of your planning goals, initiatives, priorities, as well as programmatic ones throughout the town. I'd like to thank you all very much for your time this evening, really appreciate that. My name's Jim Reardon again and I'm from Weston and Sampson. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason or Chris, do you want to talk or, you know, do you want us to start asking questions or?
Fire away.
You know, so just, just, just one of the things that I, I have a couple of questions with respect to the development that is in process on, on, at the Stop and Shop Plaza and my understanding is in the, in the, in the, whatever, the approval process of the planning board, they were to build sidewalks, so, you know, is this kind of subsuming that or is that something completely separate? How is that built into the request that we're asking for?
The plan that's in place right now on the site was for sidewalks connecting the buildings together. These sidewalks are along the right-of-way to allow, basically to connect that Sawyer Street along the Route 3A property. So, on, at least what I saw in the planning board approved plan said it was, the sidewalks are to connect the buildings and then to go out to the, out to the street and go across, create the crosswalk, so that portion can be still on the owner's portion of the work.
Yeah.
That's just a, in the scope of what we're talking about in the grant, it's just a small little handicap ramp.
Yeah, okay, what, what, what I would like to do is just ask, you know, each selectman that has questions to ask them and then, you know, I'll take any public input, we can sort of crisp, note the comments that we've received from the public via email, but also anybody that's attending that wants to speak on this because it is an important project for the town. Select Board members, let's jump in, Paul first.
So the, the connection to the sewer would be from the 3A and Sawyer Street running towards Situate towards the pump station, is that correct?
Yes.
And the sidewalk would go up Sawyer to connect to Fair Oaks?
Yep.
And then, is there anything across the street from 3A?
No, it'd just be, we're going to look, that was one of the things we might actually look at is, after we started this whole process, I looked at the trails across the street and where that is, I believe it's town-owned property, we could put the sidewalk on our land over there to allow for a connectivity directly to the parking lot if that crosswalk, we make a signalized intersection at, at Sawyer Street, it may land not at the point and then we can carry the sidewalk down as part of the design, because right now, anything in the layout becomes a permissible thing with the state, we can stay outside and.
So we could probably get better permitting options with this as a, with this grant?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the water pipe that runs from, pretty much from the cross, from the intersection there towards Situate, towards the, towards, basically towards Pond Street, you're right?
So there's some issues with the gate valves at the intersection there at Pond Street, some of them are working correctly. So they're scheduled to be replaced, so we include that in the scope to help that, because that's the main feed out of the plant there.
So that was one of the fails, one of those pumps or one of those connections failed on the corner of Pond and 3A about two years ago and there was a huge flood there on the, the far corner of the south, I guess the southwest corner in that piece of property, which I think the town, part of the town owns now, part of that the town owns now, so that would replace that. Okay.
Just, I'm gonna just jump in only because it's on a matter that Paul brought up, which is the sewer connection. The Sewer Commission approved a sewer connection from the, from the, the Stop and Shop area, that development site down to the pumping station. Does, does this, so that's already been, you know, kind of adjudicated by them, but does this extend it? Or what they approved initially was that the, did that go all the way to Sawyer Street and is there, where, you know, like at the mobile station, for example, would, would this, would they be able to hook up there if they wanted to or is it pretty much the edge of the property?
We brought it through the intersection just because if we're redoing the intersection as part of the traffic signalization, that there wouldn't be any further disruption there.
Okay.
That was the reason why we went through the intersection with the pipe.
But theoretically, could, you know, like through the intersection that where that mobile station is, could they hook up?
I guess theoretically, yes.
Okay. Okay, Corey was next and then I'll get to you, Jack.
Just, just review for me the funding here, you know, because I, how much of it is grant? There was a mention of a match, you know, let's say we get the grant funding, what would we have to do, is that something we have to go in front of, we have to get additional funding for, or tell me what's going on there?
So the, the match on our end, well, the match is coming in two places, so the owner is paying for the design in the 3A corridor portion. We will be finalizing the design on Sawyer Street sidewalks, we're gonna take that to 100% complete with the rest of the sidewalk money to get that to a billable document and then the rest of the in-kind is, is town labor. So Michelle Leary procurement, procuring the, the bid for the stuff and then myself and Brian Joyce overseeing construction. So it's an in-kind labor match, it's not really a dollar match for the town.
Okay, so, so, Dan, maybe you're gonna answer this, but the question is if, if we get this funding, how much money are, is the town on the hook for that hasn't already been allocated in some other, you know, bucket? Or, I mean, that's already available in the bucket, more accurately?
I think zero.
Okay, just want to be sure.
Good answer.
Yeah, I like that.
Jack?
Yeah, I've been following this, it's been an interesting thing, as we all should know. Actually, when I was on Concom, we approved a septic system, which has since failed and there's been all kinds of issues of grease back in there and all that, so it really needs to be done and although it is possible to, for that property to have its own, but it's probably better to tie in. The question is, does this sewer line just benefit the Stop and Shop Plaza or are there other places it will be, be able to hook into this or is this really to take care of the stop and shop, you know, issues?
Lauren sent out that memo, I think you got a copy of the memo that Lauren did, so it technically by right, if there's a public utility in the road, you have right to connect to it.
Right.
Maybe associated fees, so anybody abutting that pipe can technically connect to it.
But the whole purpose of this is really to solve the stop and shop issue, which is substantial. Right, okay, so, so one of my concerns, I've been following it and I think it's probably time that we get this thing done and I like the financing, you know, a lot, but the sewer is in a tight budget. My understanding is that the Sewer Commission has a proposal on the desk of an accepted on the developer, but for some, for some reason, he doesn't want to pay the fees to the Sewer Commission, so he hasn't signed it or there's something going on there. But that proposal from the Sewer Commission to allow this is, they've already approved this and it's on, on the developer's desk right now, is that, is that your understanding?
I just, I just want to tread carefully on, you know, a, another hearing board's decisions, you know.
I got this from, I got this from the sewer, I got this.
I understand that, but I don't, I don't want to involve, you know, specific negotiations that are going on. I think it's important to understand what the Sewer Commission approved for a sewer, sewer line and, and then what the, what the reaper, what the good news is and the bad news is with that particular pipe as proposed in this grant application will be for the town and other community members, so, you know, who else can hook up and what's that gonna look like for the town?
Now, I just think it's important that we know that it's been, that the Sewer Board has in fact agreed to this, so we can move forward. So we can move forward on this, they've agreed on it, they've actually submitted the proposal and I think that's, that's good news, doesn't cost the town anything and that is a very dangerous, you know, the sewage, even if you have a treatment plan, it can get into Peppermint Brook, can also get into our water supply, so I think it's good program.
Chris, I'll let you speak and then Corey, if you still want to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to score Jack's point, it was very well, well stated, this Sewer Commission has been talking about this for a while and they did give a, a green light, there's a, there's a two different sets of expenses. One is obviously installing is the pipe and any pipe would eventually be controlled by the Sewer Commission, they control all the major pipes. The other thing is there's a connection fee and that's not covered by, so the property would still have to pay a connection fee, like anyone else, like a betterment, you know, kind of a thing, so. So to be clear that this infrastructure would cover the pipe, but there still is another set of fees, which the Sewer Commission has separately established that would have to be paid back into the system like any other new user would be, so.
Yeah. Corey? Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, the, the, the issue about, you know, other properties connecting to the sewer line, this is a state road, so, so is this one of the things where, you know, if a resident wants to connect their house on that section of road, we really have to do it now or, or, I'm just, foreseeing what complications or trying to predict what complications we might have if somebody wants to connect in the future.
I guess I could have Jason talk about technical specs, but you know, there's really, this, if I remember, the part, most, many of the parcels on that, Katie can probably knows this far better than I do, many of the parcels there are actually publicly owned and then there are some resident, Red Fox Lane, which is right there, and the, and the, the support letter that came from three of the homeowners there could, if they wanted to, pay to tie into that sewer line, because they have visual septic right now. There are no, I don't, I don't, and again, I'll defer to Katie, this more recently than I have again. But there's a number of the larger parcels that are not developed are actually town-owned right there, so the primary commercial user would be the Stop and Shop site, it's like great pointed out. And then there's some residential parcels along the way that are already developed and potentially be connected as well.
So just, just before we go to Katie, does, does any Select Board member have another question? Because Katie's most likely will answer some of them, so get them out now. All right, we're good, Katie, do you want to follow up on Chris's comments?
Yeah, just on the land use, so this is all from Lauren's October 2019 memo. There are 31 parcels that abut the sewer line that runs from Tupelo down to the Stop and Shop Plaza. Of those 31, four are commercial and 27 are residential. Of the 27 residential, 19 currently have dwellings on them, you've got eight that are vacant. Of the eight that are vacant, five are town-owned, so you really have three parcels that are residential that are undeveloped. The rest are, already have an existing dwelling on them that could connect and switch from septic. So from my, from the perspective of the land use impact, we're talking in terms of new development relatively limited. And the other thing that didn't come up in addition to the, the point that was made around the environmental benefits of those 31 parcels that we're talking about, 50% of them have wetlands that are identified on-site. So as a result of running sewer down here, you have some wetlands protection that would happen at, if those septic systems convert to sewer connections.
Thank you, I just wanted to say if any, anybody who's an attendee in the meeting has something they want to share, just please type something into the Q and A button, name and address and we'll, we'll get to you. And Chris, do you want to, can you summarize the, the, the letters we received from a couple of the abutters? I know we got one from Darcy Schram who lives on Red Fox and during this meeting in support of this project, I don't know if you want those read into the record or whether they can just be addendums to the record?
Yeah, I could just, the, there's a joint letter that Mr. Cook, Cook sell on electronically signed by he and his, he and his wife, Tom and Darcy Schram.
Okay, so it's one letter with three?
It's one letter for three of them, right? And, you know, I write this on behalf of the owners, yada, yada, we are in favor of moving forward the sewage and wastewater mitigation option as opposed to an onsite treatment facility for this development for a number of reasons. Director, but as to this property, our properties are adjacent to Peppermint Brook Conservation Land. Our primary concern is the potential attachment to the surrounding protected natural area, just set aside by the town years ago to help ensure water quality and accessibility for the town remains stable for years to come. And they go on and talk.
That's a gist of it, okay, all right.
So, but again, I can make sure this goes, if you all don't have a copy of this, I can make sure you get copies.
Thanks, okay, so I just opened it up for any last-minute questions from the board and otherwise I would love to have somebody make a motion to on this. Any other questions? Okay, so.
I'd like to make a.
Was that a question or a motion, okay?
Well, I was gonna make a motion, but again, I'll defer to the junior selectmen. I'd like to move that we approve, that we recommend the Mass Works Grant update for the 3A sewer system, for 3A project.
Recommendation letter, yeah, Chris?
Yeah, right, it's a recommendation, yeah, that's exactly.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion in a second to approve a recommendation letter for this Mass Works grant, good work everybody and I'll start with Jack for a vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Okay, great, thank you all very much.
What I'll do Diane is I'll, Jason has drafted a letter, what I'll do is I'll circulate it to you for some, just.
Editing?
And then you can.
No offense, Jason, it could be perfect.
And you can sign on behalf of the board and then I can, I'll sign it too, there's no reason I have a second letter, I don't think. You know, right, Jim, you need two, do you need two letters or is one signed by both of us enough?
One signed by both you and Diane should be fine, yeah. There, there are a few things that we need to get in there specifically and we can, we can let you know what those are, so they're certain to get in there.
Okay.
I see Lauren's on the call, thank you Lauren and Jason and Jim Reardon for your work on this project and Chris and, and Katie for always having some expert knowledge on all the matters, so appreciate it, okay? We are ready to move on, thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager update and I don't want to leave the witnesses or the Select Board update, but let's be quick.
Okay, so I have a piece of good news and just a piece of business. The town has been awarded $30,000 from the Seaport Economic Council in two grants. One to do the engineering on the lift system at the town dock, the other to complete design work on the boat ramp at Pratt, at, I'm sorry.
Chris, you cut off, could you repeat the dollar amount?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's, it's $330,000, it's 170 for one and 160 for the other, so.
Oh, fantastic.
So we were, they were just announced today, Seaport Economic Council, normally there's a big meeting in some Seaport City, but they did it on Zoom today. but they did it on Zoom today. So we'll be getting the documents and all that soon. But that's exactly the amount of money we applied for, for both grants. And that'll complete the engineering work on both. And then the next step would be, once that's done and we have everything designed, is to see funding to help construct, which is great. So that could come potentially as early as next spring, if we get the design work done over the fall. So.
I, I just want to add that Representative Joan Moschino emailed me a picture today of a Zoom meeting with the Lieutenant Governor. And she said, I'm at a Seaport Economic Council meeting. And the Lieutenant Governor just spoke very highly of Cohasset Harbor and her tour that she got here a couple of years ago. I think when we started the Harbor Committee. And she was just, Joan was so proud of, you know, that the Lieutenant Governor remembered and was able to actually talk about the specifics of our harbor. So that was very nice to hear.
I, I remember her visit. That's when we got the first grant, actually. We got the, the first grant for the Harbor Plan. And so this actually helps fulfill two big goals in the Harbor Plan, which is that whole system and supporting the commercial fleet. And the grant, which is not just the commercial fleet, but also just the recreation fleet in town. So it's a really big, it's, it's their big grants and they're going to make a really big difference. So I want to thank everybody that participated in the Harbor Committee, Michelle and the engineering team and everyone who worked on that. So thank you all. And then from just an operational business, circulating to the board, the memo on legal services that had been requested. And we need to, in order to have the board have a facilitated, ongoing conversation and considering how much other meat is on every one of your agendas. When we were checking dates for the sewer meeting, the joint meetings with the sewer commission, the 15th, which is a Tuesday night, had, you all, you had all responded that that seemed to be okay. And we didn't need that. We ended up using the 14th. I hate to ask to consider another day, but would you consider doing the 15th as another meeting? And then you could just talk, that allowed a little more deep dive into the legal services RFP and anything else that may come up between now and then, if this more goals work or something. But that could be a little more defined meaning and that way we probably would be there on 10:45. So.
I'm glad that we've gotten a lot done. And, you know, I apologize for these lengthy meetings. But I think we should, I mean, these are like three months worth of activity that we've been able to take care of in the last couple, couple of months. So thank you for that. But yeah, I'm available. And I, and I think if we have meetings where we're just literally focused on one topic, we can be much more efficient about moving through the conversations. And then the regular business meetings will kind of play themselves out. So anybody have a, you know, anybody have any concerns with those dates? Okay, then we're going to go ahead.
September 15th, September 14th, both nights?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 14th is the already set date for the joint meeting with sewer. That's the joint, that's the joint informational meeting with sewers. And the 15th would be just a selectman's meeting.
So 14th and 15th, both nights?
Yeah. Yeah, because you're already, you're already now booked for the 21st and 22nd. So September is going to be a busy month.
Yep.
Okay, I'm fine.
We'll get, we'll get through it. And, and, and then just on the sewer meetings, Chris, reviewing their, their minutes that, you know, we did promise that we would work with them on developing the agenda for those two meetings. So we should probably bring in their, you know, have their chair and I just kind of sit in, with you and, you know, shape how we want that meeting to go.
So we've set up based on the conversations that we had as a group. The water and current team is set for coming in on the 14th. That's the team that did the study. Brian Joyce and his team will also be available because that's really just an information, getting everyone on the same page. And then any other, you know, sewer has that date set, and so do you. And then the, the 20th would be more of a conversation about options and next steps and things of that sort. So, and the goal is to have, I now have everything, Rosemary Boulkier sent me a link to everything that's been produced. So I'm going to have, I think Katie's done a nice summary, and I'm going to, anyone can look at anything if they want to. I'll try to set it up, maybe get it onto the OneDrive so you can all access it. It's a ledger. But there's a number of studies and things that were done over the last couple of years. And.
And I think it would be important to develop an executive summary, probably in conjunction with the sewer commission. So, great.
And also I'll work out, I'll talk to you offline. Diane will set up a time for you.
Okay, great. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, yeah, Jack?
Yeah, I would assume that before we have the meeting on the legal, the requests that I've been asking for since January of a list of all the, all of the legal counsel and a definite minutes when they were actually appointed. Been asking this for a very long period of time, and I don't see how we could go forward with this discussion unless we get that. So Chris, can you commit now that we will have this?
Well, I could tell you that the list of firms has been provided. Minutes, I did say in an email, it's complete. It's five firms and you have all of them in the primary councils. And in terms of the minutes, we managed to pull them. So I'm going to have them scanned and sent so you all have, so you don't have to dig in for them. So.
Thank you.
So wait a minute. You are stating right now that you have given us a list of all the lawyers that you have used or the town has used in the past two years? All of them is on that list?
The, the, the five firms that provide legal services to the town are in that list.
In the past, going back two years?
Yeah, yeah, since, since the March of, beginning of 18. Well, everyone has provided legal services, Jack. So, so when you say attorney, so the town did hire an investigator for a harassment complaint. And that was person happened to be an attorney, but it wasn't, they weren't retained as an attorney. They were an investigator.
So let me.
So again, I, I did include that in this list because they weren't retained as counsel.
I think, I think the, the primary missing ingredient are, are, you know, the minutes that, that we've, that Jack has asked for with the appointments. We will, we are going to structure this conversation.
Right. I will file a freedom of information, which I already have. It's a terrible way to have to get information from the town manager who should be reporting to the select board. But if that's how it needs to be done, I will do that. And Chris, as you know, I filed it. And if it isn't done in a timely manner, we'll have to proceed. And I know other town officials have had to do this. Let's hope we can move beyond this. This is not a way to run our town. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. We're going to move on off that topic. Thank you. You've made your point. Okay, select board comment period. So Corey, you have anything?
Sure. Last week of summer, get outside. We have some phenomenal, phenomenal parks. You know, just Wamputuck, Wheelwright Park, go for a hike.
But, but no running on the outdoor trails?
Yeah, if you run.
Just be careful.
You mess up your ankle. That's why I've been in and out. I've been icing my foot here. So, but be careful, but definitely get outside.
Great, thank you. Carrie?
Two quick things. Vote, 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 vote. If you want to vote early through the mail, you can still do that by submitting your application until 5:00 PM tomorrow in the silver box right by Town Hall, the ballot box. Also, you can still vote early tomorrow, Thursday or Friday. So you can vote early tomorrow from nine to four, or Friday from nine to noon. And then the election is on Tuesday. So please, all registered voters, make your voice heard and show up and vote. Also, the Safe Harbor vigil is on this Monday from 6:45 PM to 8:00 PM on the Town Common. And it's a vigil to just honor, you know, recognition of the International Overdose Awareness Day. All are welcome. And people are instructed to wear masks and practice social distancing. So thank you to Safe Harbor for arranging that. It's a really powerful, important event.
Jack, any matters you haven't covered?
Well, let me think. Just a couple of things that people really concerned. There's two issues. I guess on the property on Jerusalem Road, there's a house that did not go through large house review. There's another one potentially on James Lane. There's been a lot of concern with people who are concerned about protecting our architectural heritage and the laws. So I think somehow we need to figure out what's going on with zoning. And the other issue is, we've touched on earlier, a lot of people really like Wadley Park, but they're very concerned about what could potentially happen with the traffic. It's a dangerous intersection. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but I think I'm hearing from a lot of concerns from citizens. Thank you.
Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, a quick thing. The work down Sawyer Street, please be very careful coming up because there's that blind hill on the top. They're working on the pipes there. And they're up and down the street at different sections. So don't fly down Sawyer Street. The other thing is definitely get your flu shot early wherever you can, which is going to be helpful. And I would ask that you be, you know, it's late. I worked all night. I've been up most of the night last night. And can people just be civil during this meeting? I'm really getting annoyed when people jump on each other. You can do this offline. Honestly, do it. Be civil when you're here because frankly, I'm losing my patience. I've been up all night. I'm here all day. And I'm here all night. And frankly, you need to be civil. That's all.
Thanks, Paul. You know, I just think in general, you know, everybody is shouldering a lot more than under any normal circumstance. And I just want, I just want to echo just, just general respectfulness. I, you know, we see it with people at supermarkets not wearing their masks. And, you know, we're all in a very difficult and challenging environment. So thank you, Paul, for bringing that up. The only thing I'll add is on the Wadley Park, you know, I was real, you can't control what happens. But I mean, pretty much that entire newspaper article was from, you know, a conversation we had in March. And on September, on July 28th, that was when my wifi went down. And Carrie managed that part of the meeting, but it was basically just to say nothing's, nothing's happening. So, you know, I was sorry that the neighbors got the wrong message that this train was way down the tracks. And to Jack's point, this is obviously, if we do do any kind of work there, there are neighbors and it's a very sensitive environmental area. And we got to do it right. And we will, you know, we will have to notice abutters and have conversations. So that is, that is definitely not on our priority list. Thank you all so much for a very long meeting and a lot of great accomplishments. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Jack?
Oh, Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Be well, everybody.
Very good.